Thank you guys for joining, I apologize, I'm dealing with another another issue of high priority at this moment as well. Okay, so seeing that we're all here, I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven oh two. And this is the agenda, it is a legislative meeting, American Council for Tuesday, June seventh, seven PM, and this is a virtual meeting. So I will start with the call to order, Valerie Woodall.
I'm here.
Jamie Tarlo.
I'm here, I'm here.
Luke Chesek.
Yeah.
Jared Stoffus.
I'm here.
All right, and I'm here, so we have all five of us present for this meeting. We'll like more to the pledge allegiance, Jared, can you please lead it? Ready, begin? You guys are awfully quiet and mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America.
Intercanation for which stands one.
Indivisible.
Thank you guys so much, so we have a very, very long agenda, I think it tops at four hours about. So Jared, can you please do us the honor of reading through the agenda? Thank you. Jared, if you're reading, you're in mute.
Sorry, I'm sorry about that, I got disconnected.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I pledge allegiance to the flag in my suits of America. Yes.
You already did the pledge of allegiance.
I'm sorry, I got logged down in the middle of it, I'm sorry.
So the rest of us carry it very synchronized, but we did it, but right now it's like read the agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, apologies. Review of the agenda, and council review of the agenda for the meeting, adding, deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, presentation, the youth scholarship awards, the mayor and council will present the 2022 youth scholarship awards. Number four, discussion and vote on 2023, excuse me, youth scholarship award schedule. The mayor and council discuss and vote on the 2023 youth scholarship award and schedule. Number five, update from the Department of Parks and Recreation. The mayor and council will have an update from the Departments of Parks and Rec on the proposed improvements to the Mount Rainier South Park. Number six, presentation on proposal from Throne to add a unit in the city's park and ride lot. The mayor and council will receive a presentation on a proposal from Throne to add a unit in the city's park and ride lot. Number seven, discussion and vote on the city of Mount Rainier million dollar incentive fund, twenty-five thousand dollar loan for hands-on barbers. And council will discuss and vote on the city of Mount Rainier million dollar incentive funds, twenty-five thousand loan for hands-on barbers. Number eight, discussion and vote of mayor and council, presentation of the Arts Commission FY 2022 Public Art Project. The Arts Commission will present their proposal for FY 2022 Public Art Project, a banner project for decorative lampposts in the city's mixed-use town center zone, they'll feature the work of local artists. Mayor and council will have a discussion and possible vote. Number nine, mayor and council member event announcements. Number ten, public comment. Number eleven, presentation of closed session summary. Mayor and council received the closed session summary from May fourth, 2022, and May twelfth, 2022 for the vice mayor. And presentation of minutes. The mayor and council received the following minutes from the city clerk. May second, 2022, special legislative meeting swearing-in ceremony. May fourth, legislative meeting, May twelfth, special legislation meeting, May seventeenth, work session. Number thirteen, appointment to the Gateway CDC Committee, the mayor and council will appoint new council member liaison, the Gateway CDC Committee. Fourteen, discussion and update on Potts Hall Welcome Center, twenty, the mayor and council have discussion update on Potts Hall. Number fifteen, discussion on the comprehensive street and sidewalk study assessment and redesigning plan. The mayor and council have discussion on proposal received from the tool design group. Number sixteen, second reading and adoption resolution number two, 2022, Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The mayor and council have the second reading and adoption resolution number two, 2022. Number seventeen, ARPA discussion and vote. Mayor and council have a discussion which will include renovation of the insurance building. Number eighteen, first reading of ordinance five twenty-two. Amending chapter twenty-four, boards, committees, and commissions on the code of ordinances of the city of Mount Rainier to add Title III Police Review and Advisory Board and repealing ordinance. I'll get, sorry, number eight, 2020. The mayor and council, the first reading of ordinance. Number five, 2022 repealing ordinance, number eight, 2020. Number nineteen, vote and approval minutes, the mayor and council will vote on approving the minutes, April nineteenth, 2022 work session, public hearing, and budget work session minutes. And April twenty-sixth, budget work session and public care for traffic calming devices and zone residential parking. Number twenty, discussion of vote, mayor and council recessed ten minutes. And number twenty-one, adjournment.
So council, you have heard the agenda, all twenty points of it, right? Thank you, Jared, for reading it. Just as a point of information, we usually do this because we are aware that some of our residents are just hearing us, they cannot see the agenda per se, so that will allow for them to be able to hear what's going on in the overall agenda, but at the same time individually. All right, so council, I need to know where you guys, how do you feel about the agenda, you're approving this agenda? Any feedback? No.
I'm good with it.
Good with it as well.
Yep. Okay, if we're all good with it, we're moving on to the next side, and thank you, that was like forever and a day reading it. All right, thank you guys so much. So now we're gonna move on to item number three. A presentation of youth scholarship awards, twenty minutes allocated, the mayor council presented the 2020 youth scholarships awards. As you guys know, every year, for the last four years, we are very happy to come into June as we close our fiscal cycle, celebrating our youth and giving awards, so Melissa will put up the names of the seven recipients that got nominated to move forward from the from the scholarship committee, the scholarship committee is formed usually by one member representing each of us of council. Because of the different turbulence of the different elections, people leaving and stuff like that, for the last year, we decided to extend it for one more term. So we want to thank the scholarship committee for serving two years on this task and extending their term one more year to make sure we have some steadiness. And thank you guys so much for your service, so. Without delay or ado, here are the names of the scholarship recipients. Anthony Romero Gonzalez, Cynthia Muñoz, Montana Norman, Charli Arain, Mira Rain, Mary Tovar, and Osman Mila. And some of our youth are actually here with us, one of them, Montana, excuse herself because she has prom today, and we fully understood that, it's a special day for her. So members, awardees, I'll call upon you guys if you're here, so I'll be able to say a few words. And then I'll pass it over to council, okay? Anthony, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Anthony, congratulations, winning the scholarship.
Thank you, ma'am, I really appreciate it.
So can you tell council a little bit about you and what this scholarship means to you?
So I am from Mount Rainier, and I have been attending, I attended the Mathcave High School when I was in high school. And now I'm a sophomore going into my junior year of college. And I basically, I played football, but I had to stop playing football to focus on my studies. And this scholarship means a lot because it basically helps out with what I stopped playing sports for, and you know, because I was struggling financially, and now I'm able to, you know, achieve what I've been, you know, striving for and just go on with my career. So basically, I feel like the, really, oh, I apologize, someone continues to call me, but um, yes, overall, I really appreciate the scholarship, and you know, I'm very forever grateful for this.
Thank you so much, Anthony, and we're glad to hear that this is definitely gonna help you achieve your dreams and not having to decide in the in the path you can take. Cynthia, you're on the line, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody, so I'm very grateful to be the recipient again, I was able to participate last year and with the opportunity of getting the scholarship, I'm able to continue my education with the youth scholarship that I received last year, I was able to make the dean's list and the president's list this semester. So I'm very, very grateful for Mount Rainier to be able to give me this opportunity to continue my studies, and I will try to make you guys proud next year again, to try to get and maintain my GPA to stay in those lists, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Cynthia, congratulations, it's a big accomplishment to make that list, I believe Anthony also made one of the lists as well, he's also very humble. You guys are great. Montana is on prom, and Charli, are you on the line?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
I could hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to say I'm really appreciative of the scholarship, I've been awarded the last four years. And each year it's helped me to continue my education. And I'm now in my last year of my master's program, so it really helps out a lot.
Perfect, thank you so much, and we look forward to hearing from your graduation and celebrating with you as well, okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, Amira?
Here.
Hello. The floor is yours.
This scholarship will help me continue my education with being out of state and staying on campus, so that helps out a lot. And I will definitely be applying the next couple of years to finish out my undergrad years.
Perfect, thank you so much, Neri, the floor is yours.
Hello, everyone, thank you for having me here, and I want to say thank you for this opportunity, I really appreciate that you gave me the scholarship, this is my first time, and it's a big help in achieving my goal of getting my my degree in construction management, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Neri, congratulations, and we look forward to you continuing to accomplish your goals as well. Osman, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Osman, and this is my fourth year receiving this scholarship, I want to thank the commitment to take the time and interview each of us, and also Mayor Selena who created this scholarship. I'm about to graduate next December with Bachelor in Hospitality Management. I did my associate last year, and this scholarship means a lot to me and my studies, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, Osman, and we have very humble students receiving this scholarship, Osman has also received what's what and awards through Maryland and DC as well for his humanitarian aid. So thank you guys so much, and I'm gonna open now the floor for council to say a few words, so council members, we're gonna start with Jared.
I just wanted to thank everyone, you know, for participating, for, you know, taking the time to reach out and apply. And congratulations to everyone, you're all, you're all doing amazing things, it's really exciting hearing about what you're doing, what you're going through, and where you're headed, so congratulations again.
Thank you, Jared, Valerie, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I echo what Jared said, I mean, it's exciting to hear what you guys are doing. It's exciting to see that you're making a lot of progress, and I wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you so much, Jimmy.
Lesson is, don't talk unless you have something to say that's useful, and I just want to say congratulations and good work.
Thank you so much, Jimmy, Luke?
Congratulations, everybody, good work on applying, I want to thank the application committee for selecting you all, I know they had to put in a lot of work to get this done, so thank you to the committee. And I'll say the same thing I say every year, you know, don't, don't let this be the only opportunity to sort of talk to us between the five of us as elected officials here. We know a lot of people, just because we have to knock on so many doors and talk to so many people to get elected. And there are a lot of people in this community who do a lot of different things. So if you ever want a job in an industry, and you want to talk to somebody in that industry, and you're having trouble figuring out who to talk to, we can probably find someone who works in that industry. Once you get out of school, you know, a lot of finding the job you want is just through networking, you meet somebody, you talk to them, they have an opening, they let you know about it, they like you, you get a job. And so, you know, if you're ever having a hard time finding people in the industry you want to get on, get into, please reach out to us. And we could probably, between the five of us, find somebody for you all to talk to, so don't, don't discount that, and just congratulations, everyone.
Thank you so much. Scholars, congratulations, council, tomorrow we are having a meeting with them because they're gonna be taking photos. We should take individual photos, group photos, to put all over our social media and, you know, and it's good, I think we're also gonna take individual photos so they could take like the digital print with them, in case they need to apply to anything, they also have that with them. So that's gonna be taking place at six thirty tomorrow at the police station. Okay, so it's always a great time, and looking forward to it, and I want to give a big thank you to Melissa, this was her first year being the staff liaison for the scholarship committee. Melissa, I know that I'm very specific in the things that I love. And we worked pretty well in making sure this happened, and it ran really smooth. So thank you for setting all those appointments, working with the committee, working with the youth to make sure you were calling them and emailing them, and make sure they they followed through, and a big thank you to the families, and for, you know, raising wonderful, wonderful kids. They are outstanding, so we're happy to come in and help. And at the same time, thank you to all those wonderful letters of recommendations. I usually send an email like thanking the people that wrote letters for you guys, because people don't have to write letters of recommendation, but they do, and they were outstanding, they were definitely outstanding letters, so big congratulations, I will see you tomorrow at six thirty. You and two guests come over, and scholarship committee, thank you so much for the work and effort in making sure we got great scholars. And, you know, we look forward to see what else is coming our way, and I'll be giving updates as we go, okay? So thanks, you guys, so tomorrow we'll be giving you guys the checks, taking pictures, and doing the pump and ceremony in those at six thirty. All right, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, okay, perfect, oh. It's always so rewarding, you know, this is one of the things that I love the most about being able to invest, hearing like where they're at, what they're doing, and how this is actually gonna help them. It has continued to help them, all right, so, moving on to the next items, to make sure we have a whole year heads up. I just wanted to make sure we put on the screen, it's discussion about for the 2023 youth scholarship award schedule. So that way the community is alerted ahead of time when the deadlines are coming forward. Usually by September, we'll have the question, the documents out, but this will give them a sense. So December fifth to the ninth, the information will be sent it to the schools. So council, if you have any schools that also need to be added to the list, happy to send those out, but that's the first contact we have before the kids go on break. May twelfth, that's when the packages will be due, May fifteenth to May twenty-sixth, that's when the applications are reviewed, usually our city clerk goes through them to make sure they have met any requirement, if there's like, you know, a question, she likes to, you know, she'll be able to take care of it, and, and submit it to the to the scholarship committee, and, and set up appointments for the interviews. And no later than June second, finalists and parents and guardians are notified of they won, so the kids do know that they won, but we've asked them to keep it confidential until the meeting. And they, they, four years in a row, they have honored that request, and I feel like this year they're gonna do the same thing. And by our meeting in June sixth, that's when they come in front of us to make sure that we, we, we award them and celebrate them, okay? So that's what it looks like right now, so I will say to you guys, as you're thinking of your new appointees to the scholarship committee, let them know that between May fifteenth and May twenty-sixth is the commitment for them. For them to either, you know, do the interview, so like meet to select the candidates. So that way they're aware what the commitment is, the committee will meet like maybe two or three times, depending how many interviews there are, they try to knock most of the interviews in one night, but there's times where they have to do it on two nights, right, two or three nights, so they all like get together and take care of that, but as you're looking for candidates to serve in your, as appointed personally on your behalf, those are the dates that you need to look into, so. I'll open up the floor if you guys have something to say, but if not, I'm happy to move with a, with a vote of approval.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
So I want to thank, you know, you and Melissa and everybody for all the work with the scholarship committee, it's really is rewarding, and it's good that we're going out and and doing that, I mean, we did get some communication from one of the people involved in the scholarship about, question about you know, process and how much it went out. I was just wondering if it's possible to get some feedback from them about how it worked and what they think about it before we just, you know, I mean, moving ahead of a tentative schedule sounds fine, but I'd like to get at least some feedback from the people who are reviewing, what they think about how the process worked. I think that'd be helpful, you know, hear a little bit from some of the people in the committee.
Thank you, Jimmy, anybody else?
Yeah. One of the issues I heard from one of the application reviewers was the turnaround time for reviewing the applications and conducting the interviews. And so I'm wondering if it'd be possible, right now, that period is in here from May fifteenth to May twenty-sixth. And I think that's, that's only a couple of weeks, so I'm wondering if maybe we make the applications due sooner. So if all the information gets out to folks around the holidays, maybe we could have the applications due at some point in April, and give the, the application committee maybe like six weeks to review and set up interviews so that they don't feel pressed for time.
So just to clarify that the issue wasn't that the quick turnaround between us receiving the application, because the applications are received by us and and clear, the issue was that there was a breakage since it was a repeated group, we didn't do the orientation like we usually do. That's why we're putting this in front of them, so that way you let them know what the weeks are, so they could, they could reserve them. And then we have agreed, we had, we did hear their feedback to Jimmy's point, right? We are gonna have the orientation in September, once you appointed them, they're gonna have orientation, and they're gonna see, that's the reason why this counters out like. and they're gonna see, that's the reason why this counters out like a whole year ahead. So, there's no, I think maybe the weeks happen, right? And so, they're having orientation as soon as you appoint them. This is gonna be lined up, so that way, if they choose to select the days ahead of time, it'll be based on what their availability is regardless of what the day is. So, if they say like, look, it's looking like from the 20th to the 23rd, we want to do the, the interviews. That's what I, we will put forward, so that way, there's enough time for them to turn around and do whatever they need to do. But putting in April and having six weeks in between is gonna be very hard because that also falls very much into election and also the budget. So, it also means that like in our side as the city, it becomes very labor intense because it takes a while to go through them and get everything together. So, that's the reason why it got, it gets pushed like after elections for them to turn in the forms. So, that way, it, it frees up a little bit of the schedule. But I think that with having the orientation in September, having, so this is the earliest the schedule has gone now. Usually, it's out by September or November, right? But having the schedule out early and ahead, but having the orientation in September, by then selecting the days that they would like to do the interviews ahead of time, we'll be able to do the turnaround of the, I mean, if they say they want to work on the last week of May, they will have more than a week to be able to review the documents as many applications has come in. And if they need like to push it forward, like, you know, further, it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I just, you know, one of the, the issues I heard is that, you know, that, that period to review and set up interviews is a quick turnaround time. And even if you, you sort of reserve that time in advance, you, you know, people can get sick, things can come up, and it's hard to necessarily get all that done in that timeframe. And candidates, I guess you can, yeah, I, I, I'm just, I'm just expressing the concern that, that was given to me. And so, I'm just wondering if there's a way to maybe extend that May 15th to May 26th period. I understand the election, that makes sense, and, and the budget. So, I'm just wondering if there's a way to, to meet everyone's interest where there's not too much work in on, in, in for the staff. And maybe that could be having applications due in early April. And then, and then have the, the, the committee have more time. But, but it should hear what other folks' thoughts are there. I, I don't know if that would work.
Thank you, Luke. Go ahead. Any, Jared, Valerie?
Yeah, um, you know, again, this is my first year kind of watching this through, so I'm, I'm a little hesitant to offer extended feedback. I just, that was my kind of first reaction, that, that review period's a little, maybe feels like it could be a little tight, just, you know? So, again, if there's opportunities to kind of create some more time and space for reviewers, that, that would be my only feedback. It, it did, and again, I'm, I'm speaking from not knowing the process. But, um, you know, it, it, there seems to be a pretty wide window from when application info goes out to when they're due. So, I would, I would think we could ask, I would, I would think you could ask applicants to maybe send in and prepare their applications sooner. But that's just my two cents. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Valerie?
Um, so, I mean, in terms of the review period, if you pushed the review so you had one more week so that the review ended like June 2nd, and then you awarded the, are you able to award the scholarships in a non-legislative meeting, or does it have to be in a legislative meeting?
It has to be in a legislative meeting. That's the way we have done it to make sure that it's out in the public information, but it's also a last voting meeting of the year. That also gives the staff enough time to cut the checks given to the kids in enough time. Because the other issue that we have is like, the word these definitely depend on this money to be able to register. So, e- even in, in June, it gives us like a good cushion to get the checks out them, you know? That's the reason why. But, I mean, we could move it up, and I'll tell you this, it's like the commitment for the, the committee. And Melissa, please chime in if you think it's, now that you experienced your first time around. The commitment for the appointees is one night, maybe four hours out of those two weeks. And usually, they pick. And from what we heard, it's like, was that we actually sent an email like saying them, hey, would to, you know, will this day fit or will next week fit? And they're like, oh, then that's what they felt like, you know, the term was too quick, not necessarily the days. And, you know, it, that's what they were saying, like, you know, we have forgotten about it. So, that's why we're like, if we do orientation ahead of time, they get two weeks to pick any of those three days that they want. And we could move it as, but, you know, we could move it. And I realized that most of, all the committees, none of them wanted to meet on the weekend, right? And that's the reason why, if you notice, it's like a lot of the weekdays. But I have, I mean, no problem moving it to like the May 30th, what is it, June, I don't know, May 30th? Because after then, Melissa has to reach out to them, get the documents together. So, there's work following after that, that need to happen to try to like arrange the different things. Not just, you know, order the checks to sign, order the pictures, set up like the, the, the small little gathering for their families. So, I will say to you guys, it's like, that was the year we committed. That was like, and I will, I will take responsibility for that, was that we let them know. I think we trusted so much that they done it a year round, so therefore, they knew the process that when we communicated with them in May to say like, hey, what, what are days work for you guys? That was like, you know, the stuff. So, if we let them know even like a month ahead, like, hey, there reminder, you guys have to select the dates, it, it will facilitate for them to do it. So, the complaint wasn't that they didn't have two weeks to do it. The complaint was, the concern was that, that we gave them a, a quick turnaround notice that, you know, to schedule the, for the meeting either the next day or in seven days, instead of doing it in April like we done it previously. And we say, we're not gonna, we're not doing that again. We'll, we'll reach out to them in March to remind them what the weeks are so that way they could work on and what they need to work on. So, that was their space for them to remember what needs to be done. I mean, we could change it, but I'll tell you guys this, like, so this is off the agenda and it's going back in September. So, it's gonna defeat the purpose of trying to get this information out ahead of time to the community. And because we basically, if this is approved tonight, Melissa's emailing like the whole schools out this week as the first contact. And then, like, you know, right before school starts, and then she'll continue. So, December 5th is like same communication now, but they're gonna send the schedule out so they're aware at least that this is what the schedule look like. And then, the application in this, in, in December with the, with the actual question.
So, then maybe we just push the review period to like four more days, like do it till May 31st. Just, I mean, that would give them an extra time, and then you'd have a meeting like on the 31st to decide or something like that, and just state, state the date that the decision is made.
Um, so if we push it to the 31st, they'll still have May 15th to May 31st. So, the committee could pick any days out of those two, two, three weeks to meet and interview the kids. So, yeah, so you just, you know, so be fine. You give them four extra days to be able to do that. So, we will notify them. Usually, we notify them, right, be, like I said. So, the package, they'll be getting it in before the 15th. They'll probably be getting it around the 13th, depending how many there are, like between the 12th and the 13th. So, they could review them. I mean, and that means they could choose to do all the interviews on the 31st. If they choose us to give them two weeks to review the applications, or they could say, we're ready to go on the 17th. So, be up to, it still be up to them. So, yeah, so they'll have a next, they'll have about two weeks and four extra days to have set up, you know, to let us know like how much time is needed to review the applications. It could be two full weeks and, or, or they could decide like in three days, they're ready to have this meeting. So, that's what we do the spread for them to be able to decide. And the longer we go into June, the higher it became what we realized because people are going out of town. So, it became a little bit problematic for the scholarship committee to review the, the, the stuff. But Melissa, can you, any feedback? Melissa?
Sorry, I was on mute.
Go ahead.
It should be fine if we extend the time to the 31st. Or as council member Chesek stated, we could probably put up the, early up in May or in April. To me, either time will work.
Okay, so I'm, I'm tabling this application, and I'm gonna bring it back in September. So, I'm, I'm removing it from the agenda because obviously, we need work to do on it. Okay?
We just amended and, and be good with it? Is there a reason why we have to wait until September if we're just changing the dates?
Because you get to vote on it, so that way publicly, you have said that this is what you guys agreed to. So, the thing is like she'll have to like literally, the time is already done for speaking. She already sent me a text, made me know that we already run out of time. So, she'll have to literally look at the calendar and find out what days work. So, that's the reason why. I mean, we could bring it up in the work session. That's the reason why, you know, we could bring it up in the work session and decide to like make time to just vote on this item. That's fine, but that's the reasons why. So, this is the earliest you've seen the schedule. So, basically, what I want you guys also be aware, this is basically the same days off by maybe one day from all the previous years. So, we try to keep it constant so that way the schools know around what time our applications come out. And it's been steady like maybe a day or two off depending on when it starts, like when the Friday lands. That's mainly where, where we work and where legislative lands. So, that's the reason why the schedule has been keep going on for the last, for years with minor like date switch. So, that way, they know like in December, you're getting noticed. On this day is when the applications are, are due. So, they, that's when the schools, no more or less, is happening. So, um, I mean, Luke, if you're fine, if you guys are fine extending it to the 31st, and then we'll reset on what they just, what the committee decides to do. But if they're sticking to the same day as early, because they want to get done with this as soon as possible, I'll tell you guys that much. Go ahead. Luke, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just, I think we're, we're allowed to, we're allowed to, to amend something and vote on it. There's not, there's no, it's not like you have to bring it back for a later vote if it's not substantive. I think we, we've, we changed things in the past before we vote on them, changed small things like that. I don't, I don't know that we have to bring it, wait for another legislative session. It's, it's, in other words, it's not like the public would be prejudiced by us changing the date from May 15th to May 31st for, because of a discussion we had when considering the, what's in front of us. And this is not even legislation. This is just a calendar. So, I don't even know why we would have to bring it back to another legislative session. I think we, I think we're good. We could, we could do it and vote on it and then ask Alyssa if we did something wrong and then bring it back to the June work session if you just want to be safe. But I, I think we're okay.
My point is that if you guys are gonna, because now you're not changing just like the 26th to 31st. Now, you guys are suggesting also like to change when the applications are due. So, Melissa's gonna have to go check to make sure we, we lighten up the times correctly. But the idea was for this to be approved and discounted to be sent out to the schools tomorrow. So, that way, they could have an understanding of what it looks like ahead of time. So, we start touching bases right away.
Yeah.
So, the 31st fulfills what you guys need. If not, like then we'll send it back to, we'll have to work on the days to make sure it matches, not an election, not a budget meeting. So, that way, we, we keep away from those dates because the reality is like, you know, having those extra meetings during budget season, the elections. So, we need to make sure it's not anywhere near election and anywhere near any of the budget dates to make sure we don't overwhelm ourselves.
And I don't think we, like, we didn't just vote right now on the candidates when we, when we had the, the, the meeting just now. And I don't remember ever voting on them to get their, their money. So, I, to Valerie's recommendation earlier, we, I, I don't understand why we couldn't just have them present at the, at the work session.
Mainly because a legislative session is more pristine than a work session. Work session is very informal, and legislative session is more of a prestige for them to come. Not only that, the turnaround between us giving them the check is a little bit too close to the fiscal year for them, and some of them need to pay their fees ahead of time. So, waiting for the third week of, their week of June puts a couple of them like, you know, too close where they need to be paying fees. That's the reason why. But you guys, do as you guys please. This is basically what has been done in the last four years. If you guys want to make a minor movement from May 26th to May 31st, that's fine. If you guys want to move it all these days, that's fine. But what we do is like, we're gonna hold it and not send this out to the schools tomorrow because if not, we'll be sending the wrong information out, and that's what we don't want, you know? But we definitely heard the feedback from the committee and stating that they would like for us to send this information out sooner, you know, than later. And also addressing the, addressing the fact that, you know, they would like to get more notice. And we said, we'll go back to the orientations because that has helped them to make sure that there are, they, they put it in their calendar ahead of time and touching bases with them two months before the applications are due. So, that way, they let us know what they want to do and what, what they want to schedule ahead of time. So, those are the three changes we made to, to address the concerns that they have. So, the concern wasn't that two weeks is very little time to review and schedule the appointments. The concern was that we notified them about the meeting the day before or seven days before. That's what it was, and they hadn't seen, for whatever reason, they hadn't seen the calendar. And that's fine. We say like, you know, we'll work on making sure that calendar gets to you guys as soon as possible to address it. So, if the issue wasn't, issue wasn't two weeks is not enough. That's what I'm saying. So, and they're trying to fix something that is not what they were addressing because at least that's the feedback that we, the, the feedback that me and Melissa got, right? That it was just that. It was like to let them know like, hey, like it's April, just reminding you that in May 15th, between May 15th and May 31st is when you guys have to like, you know, schedule the, you guys are gonna meet to schedule the appointment. Please like put it in your calendars. That's, that was what they, they asked for us to do. And we said, we're happy to, to, to do that and submit the calendar as soon as possible. Have orientation after you get appointed, reach out to you guys two months, and then send an email out to you guys when the application is out. So, we'll have more communication with them, like, here's the application, here's the question. This is the schools that we have sent, everybody we have heard back from. At the same time, like, hey, like, is, you know, is April just reminding you like, these are the weeks? And, you know, start working on selecting them and checking them in a month ahead. So, it's more communication. That's basically what they, what they ask. So, we're gonna make sure we're touching bases to get this done. So, that way, they, they 100% will know that starting May 15th is when they'll be submitted the scholarships that we receive. So, that way, they have, they have time to review and, and base it on how many we receive. They, and everything, so just to be clear, the applications that'll meet face to face or virtually, they each get a, a link to review the applications. So, they do that privately on their own. They don't have to meet. So, they're usually the only meeting they usually have. This is because they chose it to, not because we chose it to, right? It's to interview the, the students. They felt like, you know, it was better that way. We said, okay, we'll make it happen. And that was the change that happened during COVID. So, if you guys want to change it to the 31st, that's fine. We'll make that, that, that change and, and move on.
So, Selena, I'm, yeah, I just, I don't have any, I mean, I haven't been through this process before. I, you just asked for feedback. I reflected very quickly on what, you know, I thought. But I haven't been through the process nor has I implemented. So, I mean, I'm, I'm honestly fine with whatever city staff and other folks think. So, that's my, that's my two cents.
Perfect. So, if there's no, um, perfect, if there's no consensus, we just bring it back to the work session. And then Melissa will figure out how to call it. We'll figure out what days to not interfere with any of our meeting budgets or election. Okay? So, I'll work with her with that. All right. Moving on to the next item.
Is there no consensus? I'm, I'm, I'm good with just changing to May 31st if other people are good with just that little change.
Yeah, so I'm good with that as well. I think, I think we should just move it to May 31st. That gives them four extra days, and then the review committee still sticks with the same schedule here for notification and for awards.
Okay. Thank you. If you got, we'll change it to the 31st and send this out tomorrow to the schools then. Is there any, Jared, I heard from you, Valerie, Luke, anything else, Jimmy?
I don't have anything to add. This is like a micromanaging scholarship thing, and I don't really know the process. I mean, I'd like to see him, you know, more, is that my schedule? Somebody's on. Is that my schedule? Somebody is on. I mean, I'd actually like to see some feedback from people in the scholarship committee. But uh, you know.
In writing, they could put in writing because they
Yeah, no, just like, yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to just, you know, see what they think. But, you know, this is fine for now.
Do me a Can you write down?
Somebody's uh, somebody's echoing. Can we mute everybody who's not on the council? S- Selena, what did you ask me?
I I know I said um, I asked Melissa to type down the recommendations that they made because I we're basically letting they let you guys know what recommendations they made. But if
Yeah, I haven't seen that. So I mean.
Yeah, there's, I mean, that was it. It was like uh to notify them like with more ahead of time. Um, when the, I guess, to remind them more than anything because uh this application process came out like in December. So it's not like nobody knew about it, but obviously to remind them with more notice uh when the weeks are so that way um and closer to it, but with enough time so that way they could um they could
Specifically the answers. I have no problem with the we're going forward.
All right, perfect. And the only reason why it's also here, you guys have to remember that it's our meetings. And even if people are not here, this is what they watch later. And I could always direct and be like, the schedule came out like in June to give everybody head, you know, enough notice, right? Whether it's the community, whether it's the schools, whether it's applicants, that this is when they need to focus to like look for that application coming out. Okay, all right, perfect. So Melissa, you changed the day. Thank you so much for that. And if you could type the three uh, the three things that they ask and send it to council, that's fine because they want to see it in writing. Okay? Melissa, and I know she's, I know we're way over time. That's what I was like, let's move on. All right, thank you, guys. All right, Melissa, can you move to the next item on the agenda? Thank you so much, Melissa. Uh, item number five, update from the Department of Parks and Recreation. Mayor Council will receive an update from the Department of Parks and Recreation on the proposed improvements to Mount Rainier South Park. Uh, the South Park is composed of um the small playground, uh, the skate park and the green piece of land thus in the corner of um Thirty Seventh and Otis. So um who do we have from the Department of Parks and Recreation? The floor is yours.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Selena, members of the City Council, persons, guests. Uh, for the record, my name is Mark Conley. And I am a landscape architect working in the park planning section for the Department of Parks and Recreation. And tonight, we're coming back to the city to report on a project that we brought to you previously or to follow up on a presentation we made to you previously. And next slide, please. I'll try to be quick in the interest of time. Uh, I already introduced myself. Uh, Tanya Hedgepath, the supervisor for the park planning section is also on the call. Um, Mount Rainier will go over the we will go over the park location. We'll do a quick recap of our original presentation. We'll present our new information. Go over the project schedule. And if there are any questions, I will be on. Also, I am dropping in the chat um my contact information. So meeting participants, if you would like to email me at any time, please do so.
Thank you.
Um, go ahead. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the reference location. We're talking about Mount Rainier South Park. It's a very small piece of property, less than an acre, that is southeast of Rhode Island Avenue, very near Thirty Seventh and Otis. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, on March fifteenth, we gave a presentation to the city of Mount Rainier. I think Denny Taveras was there and there was also a um developer who was talking about or an owner who was talking about putting murals on the building behind this park. Uh, during that presentation, we talked about um possible improvements to the park. And there was a request to add shade structures to the play area that is located um fronting, I guess, Thirty Seventh. And additionally, we had talked about or discussed there were some concerns with the skate park, the skate ramp area. And we also got a cost estimate to do those repairs in the skate park. Next slide, please. Um, during the presentation that we made, there was a recommendation or a suggestion from the community that shade was very important to the residents. And so we did meet with the um vendor for this particular piece of equipment that is existing out there. He recommended that we do some adjustments to the posts that are located on the play equipment and that we add three shade structures. And you could see the outline um in the dash lines on the screen. Uh, one of them is kind of um hexagonal shape. There's a large square sail or shade structure in the middle. And then the last one over by the rock scape climber is also just kind of umbrella shaped, hexagonal or you know, multi fat, multi sided uh shade structure. And um, these will not be attached with cables or any post or configuration that will go to the ground. These will be mounted directly on the play equipment. And um, you know, it should provide that. This was the manufacturer's recommendation for the best opportunity to get shade over that structure. Additionally, these will not require any special permitting, any special code requirements, any type of um stormwater management because they are simply an amendment or an add on to the existing structure. Uh, next, I would like to present the next slide. Uh, these features, they come in a variety of colors. We can do multicolor. We could do all the same shade. Um, uh, that's for the community to provide some input on. And certainly you could do that in the chat right now if you would like to do that. Uh, we could open the floor for a discussion. Um, any comments that you might have?
Um, Laura, I was thinking if there's any way you guys, because uh we could schedule a meeting with the neighbors um here at Thirty Seventh Street Park, based on whatever your ability is. And I could put some days together with them so that we um, because they're the ones that are very surrounded by this um, by this beautiful colors.
Mayor Selena, I am also suggesting that we will leave this presentation with the city. You may post it on your webpage. Um, get back to me. Any comments by maybe uh June seventeenth? You can expect extend beyond that, but we do need to order the equipment and the the shade structure. You know, we didn't need to decide. So if you put up the next slide.
Laura, is it June seventeen, you said?
Yes, I would like feedback by the seventeenth if possible.
Because I'm sending it to the collective right now as we speak.
Okay, I put this slide in there. It's a little side by side. So you could kind of see the colors next to the equipment. And um those two large evergreens that are on top of the structure in the very back, they would have to come off to allow the shade structures to be mounted properly. So we're talking about removing those two um evergreen trees or those, you know, they look like an evergreen tree and then um replacing them with something in this color palette. Those are the options. Those are the opportunities. Um, some of the brighter, they are not supposed to fade, but they, my experience has been sometimes those really, really bright colors end up kind of um not so good after being in the sun for you know, two seasons, three seasons, whatever. Um, something that may match a little better would be uh looking in the cloud color or the aquamarine. Maybe really good additions, but certainly we want your feedback on that.
Perfect.
Okay, then we're gonna move down to the next slide, please. Uh, we're gonna try to order the shade structure on July first. So feedback about the color is important. Uh, if we delay there, we are gonna um be a little behind. We would like to start construction as soon as possible. And the manufacturer is telling us there is a lag on delivery and manufacturing times. So we're hoping to start October first and that would reopen the playground sometime in November. And, you know, it may go, just depending on the weather window, October can be iffy with hurricanes and bad weather, things like that. So uh, you know, we may get it in in October and be open for business. It may delay a little and we'll be looking later into November. And with that, I will go to my next slide. If there's any questions, uh, Tanya and I are here to listen. Uh, we I did put up our contact information. We are with the Park Planning and Development Division. You can reach out to us at uh six nine nine two five four seven. And uh, it's Tanya Edgepath and Bridget Stesney. Bridget is our division chief and Tanya is a supervisor in the unit. So uh, and also I put my email. So there's lots of ways to coordinate with us, communicate to us. And I appreciate the opportunity to present this like exciting new addition to the park.
Thank you so much. And I was sending the information over to the neighbors and they're very excited and happy to hear shade is coming over. And they're already sending me suggestions about the colors. So you'll be having that sooner than you think, maybe by tomorrow. Okay, um, council, I am gonna open the floor up to you if you have any questions um regarding what Laura was presented. Thank you so much. I know you guys have been coming in and serving and um and and also um getting the work done on the flooring. Um, we appreciate that a lot. So I'm gonna start with uh word one. Uh, Luke, Jimmy?
Thank you for doing this and appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Perfect. Jimmy?
You know.
All right, Valerie. Valerie and Jared?
Um, yeah, thank you for this presentation and look forward to improving the park.
And likewise, thanks for the presentation. Um, and I'm really excited to come. I'm sure the community will appreciate it.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to be here. Um, we're always available if you have questions, if you have other comments. Um, you know, you want to discuss it, please reach out.
All right, perfect. Uh, does any member of the community has a question? Uh, please type your name in the chat. And um, and um, let us know um name um as well as a block and street number that you live in. Okay. I am not go ahead.
Mayor Selena, I would just like to close by saying I will um email you with, you know, when we ordered and kind of little updates so you could bring that back to your community on how we're progressing with this.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And Laura, do we have this presentation on file or you could send it so that I could direct the the neighbors to look at it?
I I have sent this to your um uh city manager, city clerk, and this is on your screen right now. I am not operating this uh, the city of Mount Rainier. Whoever's operating behind the screen, the scenes on your side is running the show. So yes, you have my presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Melissa, for that. All right, perfect. Yeah, I'm getting a lot. I'm on Eastern thirty. Um, Ariel, do you want um to make your comment or you want me to read your comment?
Oh, um, just, yeah, reading it is fine. And the comment I said um that uh as a part of the Arts Commission, it would be great to just learn more about the muralists that's ultimately selected for this project. If they can be Mount Rainier, that would be great.
As far as I I am not familiar with the muralist on the building, but I will do some internal checking. I thought that was all done privately, but if there is more information with that, I will get back to you.
Yeah, so Ariel, that is a a different person, nothing to do with Parks and Recreation. So that is uh the, his name is Dylan, um, who owns so those um like most of the buildings back there. But um I'll reach out to to figure out uh what the process looking right now. My understanding is from the last conversation I had with him. He's right now doing the fixes to the building and he was gonna let me know once the murals um start going um um, when he started working on the selection, but I'll touch bases with him this week and I'll uh will provide that information to the Arts Commission. Okay? All right. Uh, thank you so much for for being here as well. Um, anybody, okay? Yeah, um, council member dates of ours will still have, uh, yeah, a hundred percent. Uh, thank you, Tanya, as well. So um, let me see. I apologize. My screen went out. Keep up, Melissa, or did I just miss it completely? Thank you so much. Okay. Um, council, since there is no members of public asking questions and there is no um is there anybody on Facebook, um, Alexa or Jared? Park and riding lot. So Jessica, thank you for being here and for taking your time to show us around and you know, uh, thank you, Jimmy, as well, your curiosity on on what uh the neighbors were 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 observing, definitely brought us together and I appreciate that. Um you you know, your 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 um ability to be able to um outreach in and connect to people is very um it's a great gift you have. So Jessica, the floor is yours.
Sure, great. Um, yeah, so thank you, Mayor, and and the whole City Council and especially Jimmy, who uh I think walked by our warehouse many times, wondering what our team was doing outside, looking at a big box. Um, so we're your neighbors over on uh Wyndham Road, just across the street in Brentwood. Um, and yeah, so for those of you don't know, uh Throne Labs is basically a startup. Uh, we started in June twenty twenty uh with just this this problem we wanted to solve, which is basically the current bathroom solution stink. Um, whether it's public restrooms that can be very expensive to put up and maintain uh to the cost to retail restrooms and small businesses or portable toilets or um even the cost to cities uh of cleaning up kind of what we call makeshift solutions. Um, when people don't actually have a respectable place to go to the bathroom. Um, and obviously, this is a problem that faces that lots of people face and especially frontline workers such as bus drivers, Amazon delivery drivers, Uber drivers, and those that are kind of driving around all day for a living. Um, so what we've designed uh is a smart portable bathroom. Um, we realized that the portable sanitation uh world had not changed a lot in about fifty years. So there the there are plastic porta potties, which everyone knows are pretty gross. Uh, and then there are kind of high end luxury trailers, which are better, but still not great and and have some smells. Um, and so we've designed, yeah, keep scrolling down a little bit to the what is a throne. Yeah, there we go. So we've designed, um, basically a throne is a smart unit. Um, it's about five by eight. It runs, it doesn't require any connection. So we can take it, put it down and pick it up with with no change to the environment. Um, it has its own freshwater tank and wastewater tank. Um, it runs on solar panels and the entire thing is touch free. So you actually enter with a phone, um either text to enter or our app um is currently under maintenance, but will be back soon. Um, so you, you know, use your phone to enter, walk inside, use it. Everything is censored.
And free. Jessica, sorry, can I pause you for a second? Hey, um, Mayor, uh Valerie, I didn't, I just realized is not on and she can't get in. Can someone let her in?
I just text Valerie, so.
Okay, okay. But Jessica, I'm so sorry for interrupting you. This is
No, no worries, worries.
So Melissa and and Jared, can you find out what what's what's going on? Um, is she's in the waiting room?
Oh, she's here. She's on.
I just got in.
All right, Jessica, I'm so sorry for interrupting.
Oh, not a problem, not a problem. It's a conversation.
Um, go ahead.
Great. And yeah, and amber ample water flow for hand washing, which also sets us apart. Um, and flushing toilet, which just cuts down on and and robust ventilation, which cuts down on the smell. So it's it's like going into an indoor bathroom, but it's as portable as a as a porta potty. Or at least the the trailers. Um, yeah, and we are designing these and building them just down the street. Um, what you see here is our first version. We're coming out with a second version this month that has We're coming out with a second version this month that has a baby changing table. Um, you can scroll down a bit more. Um, yeah, and all it requires is a five by eight foot space, relatively flat, access to sunlight. Um, and the great news is we can do a pilot with you guys. And if it doesn't work, we, everything remains the same. We just come pick it up. Um, and if you like it, we are actually right down the street. So if there's any, any issue ever, um, we're fairly easy to get ahold of. Um, so what we typically do is we rent out these units on a monthly basis, uh, and we provide a couple of things. Um, we provide the infrastructure, so the throne unit itself, um, as well as all of the paper goods and, um, elements that make it feel like a real bathroom experience. Um, and then we also do all the servicing. So we have responsive cleaning and maintenance seven days a week. Um, and we provide customer support with a, with a, uh, line that people can text. Um, yeah, and then we can also provide you data. So how many uses it's getting a day, things like that. Um, we don't share who uses it, but on the backend, every use is tied to a registered user in our system. Um, that's tied to a, a unique ID, which is the phone number. So if people do start abusing, uh, the throne, we're able to deactivate their phone numbers so they no longer have access. And that's part of the accountability that, that keeps it, um, clean and in, in good health. Um, maybe Melissa, you could scroll down to the, uh, Mount Rainier pilot. Um, yeah, and we have a pump truck, we go around, we service it like a porta potty, um, taking out the waste, filling up fresh water. Um, and we do that about every eighty to a hundred and twenty uses. Um, depends how much mass is going in in addition to, uh, the water that's flowing through the pipes. Um, but we have, again, sensors that help us know exactly when we need to go service it. Um, as well as, you know, how many uses it's getting and things like that. So what we discussed, um, we have had a number of visitors, a couple of council members, the mayor, uh, Public Works and the Police Department, all kind of came and, and checked out a throne, saw how it worked. Um, and we visited the park and ride lot and, um, thought that the location where that X is right there would be the best for at least the pilot. Um, if it continues on, there was some discussion about potentially, um, condensing some of the parking spaces there to, to make it so that it's not, you know, visibly sitting in a, a spot that, um, shrinks the accessible, that the, the handicap spot. Um, just to preempt the question, right now, the throne is not, uh, handicapped accessible. Mainly, it's an engineering problem that we are working on. The waste tank is in the base and so it would ca, it would require a fifteen-foot ramp, um, in order to meet ADA standards. Uh, but we do have a design that we've worked with, with an ADA architect, um, and hope to have an ADA unit, um, that allows us to pump, um, the waste tank into a wall instead of the base that would allow us to drop down the floor. Um, and we're expecting that, uh, to be done by February twenty twenty-three. Um, so, yeah, I think, um, we love this spot. It's close to, to our warehouse, so, you know, our, our team can really be partners with you guys. Um, and then just that hub right there seems wonderful in that it can serve bus riders and drivers, um, that struggle to find bathrooms when City Hall is not open. Um, the park and ride lot, the Capital Bike Chairs right there, uh, and more. So, um, I don't know if there are any questions I can answer.
Thank you, Jessica. I'm gonna open the floor first to Jimmy. Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Sure.
Thank you, Jessica. Uh, so we, we were a little unclear about how long you think we can run the pilot. I mean, we understand this is like a win-win for you for a while and that, you know, you're gonna be able to use this kind of as a guinea pig, but to try it out and we do. So, uh, do you think it's like two or three months and, uh, or how, I mean, I know it's hard for you to know. Yeah. Before we have to actually decide that, you know, whether we can afford this or not.
For sure, yeah, I think, um, what we were talking about as a team here was doing, so doing a full month of a pilot. So one of the things that we are working on is building up our supply over the summer. Um, and so as we get demand from different places, um, you know, we move thrones around the DC area. Um, but we were thinking a month of like for sure use for you guys, um, starting July fifteenth, uh, where we would promise not to move it. Like you would have a throne every single day and it would be consistent and reliable. Um, and then, you know, beyond that, we would potentially, if, if you're still interested, um, put one down when we have a spare one around or where we're, when we're testing a new feature or something like that. But I think it's also important that the consistency be there for at least four weeks to kind of test it out and see how it goes. Um, and then if you wanted, if people really loved it and wanted to have it, you know, consistently as what we call an amenity throne, one that, that we've committed to have in the specific location. Um, we could then transfer you over to a contract. And I think, you know, we would be your partner and I know Jimmy, you had talked about maybe going to Womata, um, and seeing if they would share the cost. Um, and we would definitely support that and provide any additional information or participate in that process with you.
So, so, Mayor, just one more comment. I, I think that, for me, that's fine. I mean, I think even not having it all the time is not a horrible thing. Having it as much as you can, uh, is, is great, especially since it's not costing us, you know, what, who are we to tell you what can and can't be done? Uh, I, just for the other council members, uh, uh, the, uh, Lieutenant, uh, Sims came back and I think we had some discussion with the police about how they would be able to have issue, uh, access to it necessary and that it would be shut down, you know, uh, late at night, so people wouldn't be accessing it.
Yep.
I mean, I, I think it's, you know, I, I don't think it's a, you know, a no lose situation for us, see how that kind of thing works and, you know.
Yeah.
We've always been having the issue about it and we'll see, you know, what, what, what kind of concerns issues come up. So I'm, I think it's a, a fun thing and actually we might even highlight it to other municipalities, they are, you know, so they can see what we have.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think we had talked about loosely, um, shutting it down around eleven. If, if we find that it needs to be shut down earlier, um, that is fine. I think in other locations, we've found that some of the most use happens later, just because that's the time when businesses are closed and it's harder to find bathrooms. So I think we're flexible in learning with you guys. Um, I think, uh, I did send a follow-up email after the conversation with the, with Lieutenant Sims. Um, we, we felt pretty strongly that we couldn't give like a code to all the police, uh, that would open the door on somebody no matter what. It's, it's counter to our privacy policy. So we will provide you guys with both our, our support number as well as kind of an emergency contact and we can remotely open the door at any time. So your, the police could, or any, uh, emergency services could call us and say, hey, open the door. Um, we do also get notifications on, um, and we can set different frequencies, you know, if somebody's been in there for a long time. Um, I think right now it's, we get notified if somebody's occupied the throne for more than twenty minutes. Um, but we could shorten that too if we felt like there were issues around it. So, um, when we see that, we look into it as well, um, and, and have processes that we're developing to move people along.
Thank you so much, Jessica. Um, we're gonna go to, uh, Valerie, uh, Jared and, uh, Luke, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, I don't know if this was covered in the very beginning, but how much, like, if we wanted to have a consistent, um, throne, um, how much do they typically cost over the course of a year or a monthly fee or anything like that?
Yeah, so the monthly fee ranges from twenty-five hundred to like thirty-five hundred, depending on like the amount of use and how often we're having to come out to service it. Um, but I think we would also probably take into consideration that you guys are just down the street. So it's not, uh, us driving our pump truck forty-five minutes to, to come serve to you. So, um, I think part of the pilot for us is also seeing, you know, in a location like that, um, what kind of use and what kind of operational lift does it take?
Okay, um, and then my other question, I haven't seen it myself, but I've seen them out in the.
Yeah.
Lot, but I've not actually seen it. How does the mobile cellphone thing part of it work?
Yeah, um, so you can text to enter, um, right now. So there are two modes of doing that. One, we have a QR code on the outside. So if you scan it, it actually pre-populates a text that you send and then the door opens. Uh, if you don't have a smartphone, there's a number that you can text throne to, and then it prompts you to like give the unit number, which is on the, which is clearly marked on the unit. Um, and then we do have an app, um, right now it's under, uh, it's being, it's under construction, uh, but it will come back. Uh, and it's basically similar to like the scooter apps where you see a map, you can choose the throne and then you can open it from there at the door, press a button and the door opens.
Okay, uh, thank you, that's all.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Jared and Luke.
Jessica, um, thank you so much for coming tonight. Um, I actually toured your, uh, building, I think, I think you were, uh, otherwise.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, not available, but, um, you, one of your staff, uh, walked me around, uh, both the facility, which is really neat, um, and then also, um, also showed me, uh, how the, how the throne work, or how the throne opened and closed and how things went. So, um, they really, really cool stuff, uh, and that was really cool to see this, uh, really innovative business, actually in our, literally in our own backyard. Um, you know, less than a, less than a mile from here. So, um, really thanks, thank you for coming out today and, um, for taking the opportunity to, um, kind of pilot, pilot your, uh, your business and your idea. In this community and, and pilot your idea with us. Um, so, but, and I really, I really, uh, really enjoyed, uh, seeing how it worked. Um, so two, two questions for you and one, I think you kind of answered, so I'll, I'll ask that one second. But the, um, the first one was, uh, regarding, uh, ADA. Um, so I think it's like, it's like a one to twelve ratio, is that right? For the slope you have to have?
I think so, yes.
How high, how high is the, um, sorry, how high is the step up?
Yeah, I can get you the exact step up. Um, and I also would get it, get it to you for both of our designs, although I think they're similar. Um, but I think it's a, a little over a foot.
Okay, no, okay.
I can send you, I can, I can get the exact dimension.
So if, I mean, if you had a long enough lead up, you know, I'm just thinking about this, like in a, in a parking space or former parking space, that would give enough, um, prob, possibly get close to giving enough, um, sort of, uh, approach to maintain the, uh, the, the minimal, the angle needed to meet ADA and also be.
Yeah, I, I don't want to mislead you though. I think it depends on what somebody's, um, ability level is. Like there isn't enough room in the current design because it's not, because it's not ADA and there are very few spots that, that would, that would allow us to put such a long ramp. Um, the current unit, you wouldn't be able to like turn a wheelchair around inside, which is part of ADA design.
Yep.
Um, where the design that we have, that we're working towards, meets all that criteria where, and there's, you know, tons of detail around, you know, where, you know, hot water pipes covered, where knees could hit it and things like that. So, um, I think ju, even just the ramp, uh, would not be enough to make it truly ADA. So just to be transparent.
Oh, and I, I appreciate that. I, I work, um, in heavy vehicle manufacturing buses and we actually manage the same issue, both with ramps deploying and, and navigating, having sufficient egress. So, and I, I really, uh, both appreciate your candor on that point and then the fact that you're also, um, working towards, um, a, uh, throne that'll accommodate folks with, um, wheelchairs and meet ADA standards, so.
Yeah.
Um, I guess the other, the other question I had was, um, with, uh, with the, with getting in, so you can do it without a, uh, phone, we can do it with a phone, uh, smartphone, you can do it with a regular phone. Is, is there a way, is there some way if you have neither? Cause there is some small percentage of folks that'll be in that scenario.
Yeah, we are, we are.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, we're working on that as well. Um, and, um, one of our core tenants is that everyone needs to have a unique ID so that there's accountability. Um, whether you're a businessman that's coming in and making a mess or an unhoused person, um, we want the ability to kind of deactivate and, uh, take away throne privileges. So we are working on that as well with ideas around RFID or near field kind of chips that would, you know, tap a card and get in. Um, we are in talks with a, um, group in, in DC about running a pilot with the unhoused using a code on the side of the throne, but we're not quite there yet with the technology. But we're working towards it, um, in the, in the near future.
Okay, no, and thank, thank you for that. Uh, you know, we navigate some of the same issues.
For sure, yeah.
I, in my day job and I, I know how challenging this can be and I appreciate all the work and thoughts you guys are putting in, uh, um, you know. Balancing out safe, you know, accessibility and safety and functionality, so.
Yeah, and what we're doing with that pilot, and if, if you have a corollary group that we could work with, um, would be open to it, um, is, uh, working with an organization that has a population that they work with, that will each get a, like a unique code on a card. Um, and then they'll have that unique code will allow them to enter the throne. Uh, but it, to start will be a small group of, um, individuals that are part of an existing program.
Thank you so much, Jessica, uh, Luke.
I don't really have anything to add. I just appreciate you guys, um, being willing to do business with us and I think this sounds like a good idea. So thanks, everyone.
Cool, well, we're really excited too and, um, like love, um, the openness and curiosity and I think, um, yeah, we're really excited that we're your neighbors as well and, um, you know, we're just across the street from Mount Rainier, so.
Perfect, thank you so much. Um, so Council, I'm gonna open up to the community. Um, if you are a member of the community that wants to speak, you need to type your name on the chat, uh, block and street number, um, on the chat and you'll be, um, you'll be given the floor. And as a reminder, um, if you have a, a multiple question, so like let's say two questions, ask both questions, so that way, uh, the presenter gets to speak and not back and forward, because we have, um, less than three minutes on the clock at this point. Um, anybody from the community wishes to speak on the subject? Anything on Facebook? All right, um, if we're on agreement, uh, we'll be signing documents, um, for the first option, uh, tomorrow, okay? Uh, Council on agreement?
Thank you, guys.
All right, perfect, thank you so much, Jessica, and, um, it's definitely a great concept. Um, I, I share how scary, you know, how scary it looks like, you know, we all have been in a porta potty and it's definitely not a good experience. Um, the throne is definitely a, a, you know, a beautiful place for you to go to a restroom and, you know, and, and thank you for the precautions being taken as well to make sure, utilize, uh, some of the concerns our team had was in case of an emergency, right? Um, you know, they do have leverages there and we'll be able to reach out to the, to the throne, um, team to be able to, um, help with that. All right, perfect, thank you so much. All right, so we're moving on to, okay, thank you, Melissa. These letters are getting smaller and smaller by the second. Uh, item number seven, discussion and vote on the city of Mount Rainier million dollar citizen fund, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, loan for hands on. Barbers. Okay, before, before I move on, just give me one second, I just have a comment, apologize, sorry for not reading it. It said, um, they had a great experience with the throne at the downtown holiday market, market. So they wanted, uh, Tori wanted to share that. Um, thank you, Tori. All right, so we are opening the floor. So Ron in FSC First, with, which of all, I know, I saw Don this morning. Hi, Don, great seeing you again. And who's also here from FSC First?
I'm joined by Ron Work, our commercial loan underwriter. Just have a couple remarks and an update for you for the program before he starts, if that's okay.
Yes, and I figured it was Ron. I wasn't sure if somebody else was here from you guys. I wanted to make sure. Okay, so Don, the floor is yours, followed by the Economic Development Director, and also the, the, the business owner that I believe is also here. Go ahead, Don, the first yours.
Thank you, Mayor Benitez, and thank you for having us tonight, and thank you, members of the council. We're, we're joining you here tonight from FSC First. Our president and CEO, Shelley Gross Wade, sends her regards. I'm Dawn Medley. I'm the Senior Vice President of Business Finance Programs. And as I said, I'm joined by Ron Work, our commercial loan underwriter, and the Mount Rainier underwriting czar for this program. And just by way of update and review of, see some new faces that I've not met yet, this program has been in existence, and FSC has been the fund administrator for the, for the city of Mount Rainier since June of 2019. So we're coming up on the third anniversary of the program. Over that time, the program has financed five businesses from the city of Mount Rainier, totaling just under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And tonight, in those loans, FSC is also be able to leverage those dollars, and we've added another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in financing to those Mount Rainier funds. In addition, we were able to fund many of the businesses during the COVID-19 pandemic with many grants from the four or five grant programs that we also administered. So wherever to, to leverage all the available dollars for these businesses. And tonight, my colleague Ron will present the sixth transaction from this loan fund, Hands-on Barber. Ron?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We have a request here from Hands-on Barbers for an upgrade to their facility at thirty-eight eleven Thirty-Fourth Street. The, the request is for up to twenty-five thousand dollars to add four barber stations to the, the location. The, the owner of the business, William Moore, I'm hoping is on the line here to, to answer any questions that you all might have. But the barber shop is adding four stations to include a manicure and pedicure station. Over time, this will increase employment at the location, one to two barbers a year for the first couple of years. We have, Mr. Barber has been in the, the business and the industry for 23 years. I believe he's been at this location for that long. And the industry, the industry analysis for the barber shop industry is rather interesting. We do a, through IBIS World Analytics, we, we look at the industry analysis, and I'll read a little bit of some highlights. Over the years, two, twenty twenty-one, the industry performed well. While there has been an, been significant or notable uptick in demand for the industry services over the last five years, the increased population has driven that revenue growth. Furthermore, barbers are, are generating more money per person in twenty twenty-one, as they did in two thousand and sixteen. What has contributed to the, to the growth in the industry is the specialized services are becoming much more popular. And I think this is one of those shops that, that really specializes in, in really doing some upscale work. For the future, the industry projects slightly slower annualized growth from two point nine to one point two. But while the disposable income is increases in the area, the industry itself is driven by population growth, which is expected to continue over time. What we, the way we structure this, just for some of you that, that may have, have, are new to the council, we will structure this, we will take collateral security interest in the, in the equipment that we, we purchase. We also require invoices to, to substantiate the expenses that, that, that the city will fund. And with the whole, with the whole real, the key to this is to, to improve the foot traffic in the area, bring some more commerce to the, to, to the location and to the city. And having said that, I will open the floor for any questions.
Thank you so much. Before we do that, Mr. Hopkins, Economic Development Director, you have any words to add?
Hello, Mayor and Council. No, I have no words to add. I think Ron, my brother Ron, right? With two Rons here, like covered everything pretty much in depth. So I guess open for discussion. And if you have any questions, I think William Moore is on the line, and he's the Samsung. He's the Samsung SMG.
Thank you so much. So we'll hear from Mr. William Moore, and then we'll open up the, the floor to, to council. Hello, Mr. Moore. How are you? Tell us a bit about your business, and I know you've been with Mount Rainier for quite a bit of time.
Uh, yes, hello. Can you hear me?
We could hear you, and we could see you.
Okay, yeah, so, okay, great. I can't, I can't see anybody, but I've been in business for over twenty-three years, to be honest. I've watched a lot of young kids grow, I watched a lot of their parents grow up, I watched their kids have kids, and I'm just, I really just want to stay local in, in this community to help, you know, the children and, and help the community still grow, as it's, as I'm seeing it's doing now, you know. I've been there since nineteen ninety-nine, and I'm saying, I'm really just starting to see the change in the neighborhood. And, you know, so I just really want to grow with the neighborhood and, and keep the barber shop looking up to standard and, you know, as the new people come into the community. So I don't really have much to say, and I'm, the, the people I've been working with have been great, helping me along with the process, and I enjoy being in Mount Rainier, you know.
Thank you.
If anybody had any questions for me, I can answer them.
Thank you so much for your commitment to the city for all those years, and, and for growing with us as well. You know, twenty-nine years is, is quite a bit of time. So I'm going to open the floor now. Do me a favor, if everybody could mute their.
Maybe Mr. Moore couldn't mute his.
Yes, there you go. Thank you so much, Mr. Thank you, Jimmy. All right, so I'm going to open up the floor to council. We're going to start with Luke, Jared, Jimmy, and Valerie.
I just want, yeah, no, I just want to say that I appreciate you, you know, doing business in Mount Rainier for all these years and finding a way to invest in yourself, keep the business in Mount Rainier, keep it running well. Just really appreciate that. Appreciate FAC, FSC for working to get a loan that can work for Hands-on Barbers. I'm supportive, and I just am really excited about it. So thank you to everyone who's been involved. Ron, I know you probably did a lot of work in the background. Haven't said much. I appreciate you for all that work as well. So thanks, everybody, and just, yeah, I love doing this kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jared, then Jimmy?
Yeah, no, thank you for investing in this community, for staying in this community, and for all the, all the interest you have and your commitment to your business and growing it with this community. So I really, I really appreciate you, you know, taking the time, obviously away from your busy schedule and running your business to come talk to us tonight. It's really much appreciated. And then thank you, Ron, very much for helping steward this along, and also the folks at FSC First. So that's all I got. Appreciate it.
Which Ron are you talking about?
Well, both, both, I guess either Ron, sorry, Mr. Hopkins, but also I should, I should have thanked both Rons. Thank you. Sorry.
And, and Don as well. So Jimmy, Valerie?
I'm a regular customer. I think Mr. Moore actually cut my hair two weeks ago. I think John was busy. I think they've actually had suffered during the, during COVID, and I think they're building up again. They were busy. I think if we look at the nature of the businesses in Mount Rainier and the kind of community we want to be, you know, we want like a diverse aspect of these communities. We have a lot of small beauty homes, you know, care places, and I think we got to make sure they survive too and expand. And, you know, not just the penny royals and the ear wine bars, but also the kind of, the, you know, the small businesses, especially, you know, the hair places that really service, you know, a lot of people and are, you know, come there, and they're always, you know, you know, people have gone there for twenty-three years. So I'm very supportive. Thank you, Ron, for being together.
Thank you. Jimmy, Valerie?
Um, yeah, I also support this. You, Hands-on Barber serves my husband well, so that's good. And, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a, it's a good initiative. So thank you to Ron Hopkins, Ron Warwick, and Don for facilitating this. And I look forward to seeing the improved space.
Perfect. Thank you so much. FSC First, you guys are always looking out for us in our community and our businesses. Thank you for making sure you leverage whatever help our business, our businesses need. Ron, thank you, Ron Hopkins. Thank you for also making sure that we do a good balance between standing businesses and new businesses, because that has allowed us to be able to bring and support businesses that are new, but also support those that have been here a long time. And at the same time, even though some of the businesses are new, they are, quite a few of them are owned by residents of the city of Mount Rainier that have been with us quite a bit of time. So although they're new, they also have that aspect of having residents that have been living in the city of Mount Rainier for quite a bit of time, and they decided to also not just live here, but also open their business here. So thank you for striking that, that, the balance that we strike true to the commitment we made with the accepted fund. And FSC First, thank you so much. Ron and Don, you're spectacular for helping us out. And, you know, it's a great shop, and I feel like a hundred percent it'll continue growing with us, and it'll be here to take care of like, the grand, great-grandkids of many of our residents at this point. So we wish Barber's Hands-on a long, prosperous, successful business that it continues to be a part of our city. So council, see, we're all very much in support. I'm going to open up the chat to the community, and then we'll take, then ask for a motion to vote for this, okay? All right, anybody from the community that wishes to speak, please type your name and last name, as well as your block number into the chat if you have any questions for any of us regarding this topic. And can you also check Facebook, Jared, to see if anything's there?
No comments on Facebook.
Okay, hearing. I see nothing in the chat. You said nothing on Facebook. Council, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Seconded.
Let me make that move. Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Is there a motion on the floor to, let me see, to award the loan for up to twenty-five thousand dollars for hands-on barbers from our Mount Rainier million dollar incentive fund? Any?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so we're probably moved. And second, any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none. This item has been voted unanimously by Mayor and Council. So congratulations, Hands-on Barber. And I'm hearing positive feedback directly from Council, which is great. Thank you guys for much to do. FSC First, thank you so much, and Ron Hopkins as well. So thank you, team. We look forward to continue working and do, you know, we look forward also to coming by once the big check and the small check are also ready as well. Okay. Mr. Williams, you have something to say?
Okay, thank you all. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
All right.
Good night. Okay. FSC First, as there goes, FSC First was also the state of economic, the state of the economy for Pregeorges County. A few of us were there, including our city manager, Economic Development Director, Ron Hopkins, Jimmy, and myself, and quite a few of the businesses in Mount Rainier as well were also present. So we had an early morning. We had to be there very early. Okay, so moving on to the next item. Let me see. Discussion and vote of Mayor and Council on presentation of Arts Commission, FY twenty-two Public Arts Project. The Art Commission will present a proposal for FY twenty twenty-two Public Art Project, Banner Project for Decorative Lampposts in the city mixed-use town center. M U T C zone that will feature the work of local artists. Mayor and Council will have discussion and possible votes. And so we have Mike, I believe, Mike, are you the Chair, if I'm mistaken?
Yes, I am.
The Chair of, and apologize, it's getting later, but Mike, who is the Chair of the Arts Commission, and I know Arielle was here. Okay, yes, Arielle Davis is also here. And anybody else from your, from your committee, let us know who else is here, and the floor is yours to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving us the time to talk to you. Yes, I'm joined by fellow MRAC volunteers, Ariel Davis, Tori Partridge, and Rachel Weber this evening. Though we are all new to the, to MRAC, we're interested on building on the past successes of the commission. And in identifying our project for FY twenty-two, we did rely on input and learnings from past MRAC members to help shape the project that we wanted to pursue. So with that, we identified four goals. I'm just going to share my screen.
And just for clarity, MRAC is the Mount Rainier Arts Commission, because I don't think that's, the acronym is known.
Correct, yes. That's the Mount Rainier Arts Commission. Sorry, I'm just trying to move my Zoom bar. Great. So our goals, again, based on feedback from other MRAC members, things that they heard from the community after completing their previous projects. We wanted to focus on local artists who live in or lease or own studio space in Mount Rainier, showcase a broader set of visual art mediums or disciplines. We wanted to pursue a project that was rotational or non-permanent, and that utilized more of MRAC's zone of jurisdiction. Those things in mind, we came up with the Mount Rainier Banner Project, which would entail us working with the Department of Public Works to utilize thirty-seven city-owned decorative lamp posts in the mixed-use town center zone to display the work of fifteen local artists for a period of two years, at which point they could be swapped out. This is what the banner design would look like. MRAC member Tori Partridge did the design work for us, and I know that the, the community is a big fan of hers, and that she's worked with the council before on other projects. So Tori, I just wanted to turn it over to you for a minute to talk about your approach to the design.
Yeah, absolutely. Apologies, apologies for not being on video today, guys. My computer died today. So we're doing this from the phone. So a little bit on the design. The Watermelon House is an example that is not the art that's being used. It's an art from, a piece of art from a friend of mine, but just to show you kind of the area that Mount Rainier artists will be able to have their work displayed in, and the fact that there will be an artist attribution in the upper right-hand corner on every side. So we're not only going to have the beautiful work of the artists, but also be able to Google them, discover more about them, see more of their work. We pulled a single-color logo down at the bottom. I pulled the closest font that I could find to the Mount Rainier website font. And the mountain design that kind of makes the texture that's along the bottom is actually pulled from the Mount Rainier logo, and the two colors kind of come from the Mount Rainier logo as well. The, the teal that seems to be. The, the teal that seems to be utilized like throughout Mount Rainier's branding, as well as a little bit of the kind of golden rod color that's in, um, in the trolley car on the Mount Rainier logo that we were sent. Um, the banner design, we've got about, we've got like a nice big area for artists to display their work. And I think that like, we're going to make sure that kind of the logo and the, the text is bold enough that it can be seen from the street, bold enough that it can be seen by drivers coming by, kind of place makes and identifies the neighborhood. But it also stays out of the way of the artist's work. It doesn't overlap it, um, and allows their, their work to kind of shine on the banners as well. So.
Great. Thanks, Tori. So, uh, this is another rendering of the, the banner. Um, the lamppost image came from the Department of Public Works. So these are the exact measurements of, uh, the lampposts that are featured throughout the community. Uh, and you can get a, uh, an idea um, of what the relationship of the banner would be like to someone at street level. Uh, the specs, um, the banners are, uh, would be 24 inches wide by 48 inches high and printed on uh, heavy-duty 18-ounce vinyl, which is an industry standard for these sorts of projects. Uh, the printable area for artwork is 24 by 36 inches. Uh, again, the total lamppost height is 15 inches. The lamppost height from the base to the bottom of the luminaire is 12, uh, sorry, not inches, feet, uh, and 12 feet. Uh, and the banners will feature the city logo and artist credit. Uh, for the application process, um, we would hope to be able to post a call for artists on or about June 10th. It would remain up for 30 days per our bylaws. Uh, artists must live in or lease or own studio space in Mount Rainier and be of at least 18 years old. Um, applicants can submit up to three works for consideration with three sample images of each work. Uh, we would encourage submissions from a wide range of mediums. Uh, so thinking sculpture, ceramics, painting, uh, you name it. We wanted it to be broad so that we could showcase the, um, eclectic and diverse talents of the community. The artwork can be, uh, photographs, uh, of artwork presented in digital files. Digital works of art or scans of artwork, so long as they are at least 300 DPI, which is the print standard for a high-quality image. Further in the application process, we wanted to provide, uh, guardrails, uh, for people to adhere to. Um, and so, uh, we decided, uh, that the artwork must be suitable for viewing by all age groups, thinking of families and children and just, uh, everyone across the spectrum. Um, no slurs, profanity or defamatory language, uh, nudity would be prohibited, graphic depictions of violence or harm would be prohibited. Uh, as would overtly political or party-affiliated political content. Uh, as far as getting the word out, um, we would use city-owned communications vehicles, uh, local media, um, in the past, uh, the Arts Commission has had success, uh, working with East City Art. Um, we would also engage hyper-local media to help get the word out to the community. Um, local arts entities, the community listserv, email addresses collected during the last RFP process from artists that we could identify as being local uh, and our own, um, personal contacts in the community. This list is not exhaustive. So if there are other ideas for places that we could advertise or promote the call, we are happy to hear about it. Uh, financials, um, the allotment that is left, uh, in our line item of the budget for this year is $13,329. Uh, the cost to produce the banners would be $1,843. Uh, the red struck through text is just to acknowledge that this number changed from the last presentation that I sent you all. Um, the vendor would be ASAP Fast. Uh, they're a Virginia-based company. Uh, we did reach out to five different vendors, four of them being local to the DMV area, uh, as well as an online supplier. The quotes ranged from, uh, $2,000, which represents ASAP's quote, uh, to 20,000. Um, and it does not include installation. Uh, we've been working with Rosio Latour in Public Works and she said that they can handle installation of this project. Uh, we also worked with her, uh, to determine if there are any, uh, restrictions or guidelines around signage or, uh, objects being attached to city lampposts, uh, and she told us that there are none. The cost of the hardware, uh, would be around $1,100. Um, for artist compensation, um, we, uh, agreed to, um, $1,600 for the lifetime of the project, $300 a year. Uh, if 15, uh, artists participate, that number could reach, uh, a cap of $9,000. Um, with funds remaining of about $1,300 for incidental or unexpected expenses. Um, for artist compensation specifically, we spoke with, uh, the owner of Washington Printmakers Gallery, who did a similar banner project in Georgetown. Um, so we kept, uh, her compensation, uh, model and levels in mind. Um, we also consulted with photographers because essentially what we're doing is not commissioning artwork, but we're licensing, uh, an image of someone's artwork for a period of time. Um, photographers do that all the time, so it seemed like a, a comparable, uh, thing to, to use as a benchmark. Financials, uh, continued. Um, the budget, uh, on the last page is a best-case scenario. The goal is to utilize as much as our FY 22 budget allotment as possible. Um, the project timeline, uh, namely selecting artists and awarding contracts might push, uh, this project into, uh, FY 23 and, and, uh, necessitate that we use that budget, um, chiefly for artist compensation. In the event that we can't drill down, uh, the remaining budget for FY 22, we would just like the flexibility to be able to purchase additional vinyl banners, uh, in the event that they will need to be replaced, which they most certainly will. And just to provide you with an example, ASAP Fast, uh, came back to us and said that if we wanted to have them print 50 banners, leaving us with 13 extra, the cost would be about $2,400. So that's still well within, uh, the amount of money that we have to spend this year. Uh, and this is the, uh, general timeline. Uh, and that is the presentation. So I welcome any questions that you have and, and of course, other MRAC members can, uh, certainly jump in, um, with their insights.
Thank you so much. Um, Mike and our commission, um, council was alerted by Melissa that we have less than five minutes remaining. And we have just reached, um, item number seven on a 20-point agenda, just FYI. So if you have a question for the Arts Commission, please ask your two, three questions together and they get to answer. Don't do, um, one question, answer one question, answer, because that usually takes longer. All right. So Luke, I'm going to put you on being the liaison for the Arts Commission, the first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Arts Commission. Um, you know, I obviously very much support this. Um, one, one, um, what my recommendation to the mayor and council, if, if anyone's interested, is to support this project. Um, give them the okay to, to do it along with the purchasing of the additional banners. And then I'd put a bug in everyone's ear that, um, because they're not going to be able to spend all of their FY 22 budget, um, that perhaps in September, we consider a budget amendment to pull from, um, uh, sort of the city's checking account and, 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 and replace whatever funding they need to dip into FY 22 with for their artists. That's something we can consider in September. I'm just planting that flag, um, to see if folks would be interested in that. Other than that, I think we can give them, if everybody's on board, we can give them the go-ahead with this timeline um, and with this, uh, project, including the cost for the additional banners. Um, that would be my proposal to the group and I have no questions. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Luke. Um, Valerie?
Um, yeah, I totally support this. I think it's a great project and I look forward to seeing the banners being installed.
Thank you so much. Jared?
A fantastic presentation. Love the design, love the concept, what it's going to do to our downtown. Thank you so much for thorough, well-thought-out, well-designed presentation. Um, one very quick question, just, uh, what's the durability of the banners? Um, do you like, is there a certain time period that we'll need to replace them or consider? Sure, a couple of years down the line?
Yeah, so, um, based on speaking with our printer rep, the lifespan of the banners is a year or two, a year and a half. So they would need to be replaced at some point. Um, you know, of course, uh, that's a, a what, like median range, like some of them may, uh, stand up longer than that. But he said, uh, as an average, uh, you get about a year or two, a year and a half lifespan out of them. And I guess that's depending on, um, how sensitive we're being toward, um, you know, fading of the ink on the image, uh, versus other, uh, I guess more, um, aesthetically visible, like tearing, uh, sorts of things.
So I, yeah, so that, and that sounds like, I, I get, I, I think expected given sort of the price point, but, um, would love to, you know, if it's something that lives in their downtown, would love to make sure we kind of continue the trajectory of this, uh, you know, kind of neat placemaking, uh, that we're doing with similar things, uh, or some continuation. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Jared. Jimmy?
I have nothing to add. It sounds like good thing. Yield my time back to Melissa.
To me, because I haven't speak, that's why I haven't spoken. So question for you guys. Uh, thank you guys, first of all, for putting this together. The other question will be, um, have you guys reached out to MUTC yet and have we gone through that approval process? Is it something to be done outdoor? And what does that look like when it comes to, uh, the timeline?
Um, I was, uh, under the impression that we did not need that approval, that we just needed to run the project by the, um, Department of Public Works and City Manager, um, both of whom have been involved, uh, for some months now. But if that's a misunderstanding on my part, then I need to build that in.
So I would say reach out to MUTC in case we needed, the last thing we needed is to put everything out and they put a hold. I think there's regulations for outdoor anything when it comes to the city, especially because we're a historical city. So, um, I would say even for the future, just always touch bases with them in cases needed. I think this is a question for me, whether we need or not, I'm not sure. But I would say better reach out than they put a stop on the project because it hasn't gone through them.
Like, uh, MUTC is on if you, if you need, uh, and I can, sorry, if you're connect you to the right folks if you need.
That would be great. I, I've not interacted with them before, so. Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, Selena.
Yeah, can you take? No, that's fine. Can you take care of that to make sure that at least we, um, check that off the box? I rather know ahead of time than later on get ourselves in a situation where, you know, we cannot put whatever it is, uh, because I think it might be okay, but they might be able to determine with.
Yeah, I, I.
Start according to them.
Uh, yeah, I got to double-check that too. I couldn't remember off the top of my head. So Mike, I'll get, I'll send you something, uh, right tonight. Okay?
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Perfect. Uh, thank you. The other thing is like, uh, to the list of our, of, of people to reach out, I put the DMV, uh, League of Artists. They're located in the Gateway CDC and they have a pretty big collective of, uh, local artists and their office is literally in the Rhode Island building. So it's a good way for them, uh, to add. And I think I, I thought I saw the, the, you know, Gateway CDC as well, but, uh, for sure, um, that's a very big collective of, um, local artists. I think that maybe 10 of them are of that, if not more. Um, but I made at least 10. Okay, um, saying that, uh, council, you heard the presentation to it. That was my only question to it. And I would say for me, um, I'm very open to, uh, come back in September, depending how much, you know, obviously they're going to try to get everything they can ahead of time. And if it's easy for you guys to get the extra banners, because one thing is like, uh, I think it's a beautiful thing to do, right? Showcase the city and everything, right? What I don't want is those banners to start like, you know, if they fall apart, they get damaged or whatever it is and there's no backup. Because we did not prepare for it, right? So that's something that adding the extra banners to have them available if needed definitely will help. Um, and also this is like an ongoing project, um, or is this something that we're aiming at just having for two year until the banners are done one by one? And then do nothing with it. Or is it something you guys are going to continue doing part of, um, part of a bigger message?
Sure. I mean, the, I think the idea would be to continue the project. But at the same time, because we serve on two-year terms, it would be up to the city and, uh, MRAC members that are active at that time to decide what, like how they would like to continue the use of the hardware that has been installed. Um, but I mean, we would certainly like to see it continually used as a platform to showcase the work of residents, uh, of the city and folks who have studio space here.
Thank you so much. And I know that's important for the artists because, um, they have a lot of great work and the fact that you guys are doing, you know, photos of it, that also allows for us to be able to include so many more of them instead of original art. So I, I thank you guys for having a very thought process and idea to start thinking out of the box because this will also showcase a lot of artists. And, um, I did see the message from, um, Ariel about sending message to Kiana Clark from the DMV, uh, League of Artists. And, um, Michelle Lee also where the gateways. Oh, perfect. Yeah, they are two of our, um, very local, um, um, wonderful people, residents of City of Mount Rainier who I love very much. Um, all right. Thank you, Tori. Uh, yeah, I think continuing the project will be great, even if a couple of them were added every year. As one of them goes out, the other one could go up. So that way, um, and once you guys stop it, the process will be a lot easier than, um, uh, than doing it. So, um, council, so my, my suggestion definitely, um, I'm leaning, um, I'm leaning towards very much what, um, Luke's, um, recommendation is as well. Um, because of the art commissions being rebuilt, I think we could make a very strong exception in which, you know, I know usually by the time you do 30 hits it said, but I, I'm very open in us to be able to do a budget amendment in September, um, in order to be able to, uh, you know, um, find out what funding was not spent from 2022 to be able to cover, um, any costs that might be remaining from this project. So that's where I'm at. I think it's a good recommendation, including the additional, uh, banners in case, um, they, they are needed. Okay. So, um, is there any questions from the public? Please type your name on the chat or on Facebook as well. Okay, if there is a none, I'm going to call for a motion on the floor. Um, who would like to make it?
I'm move that we adopt the Arts Commission's project for, um, uh, FY 22, which includes the purchasing of banners, um, in, with FY 22 funds, including replacement banners. And yeah, I think that's all for the motion now.
Don't add anything else because then we're going to get to the D D wires ones and then it's going to be crazy. All right, perfect. So there's the motion currently on the floor. Um, so let's make the motion and I definitely would like to add an amendment, which be, well, I've been, it's up to you to accept it or not, but, um, let's do two different votes. Let's vote on this one and I'll tell you guys what the other one I need. Okay, um, there's a motion put forward by Councilmember Cheswick. Any seconds?
Are you going to amend it before we prove it? Why don't we just amend it?
I think that all to approve this, but we definitely need to make sure, um, the conversation with MUTC happens. So we could prove to.
Mayor, I withdraw my motion.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I, I make a new motion. I move to adopt the Arts Commission's project for FY 22, including the purchasing of extra, uh, signs, uh, with the caveat that they, uh, contact the mixed-use town center committee to ensure compliance with any of their requirements.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. You heard it by Councilmember Luke Cheswick. Any seconds?
That resolves your issue, Mayor.
A hundred percent.
Second.
All right, it's been probably moved and second, any objections? Abstentions? Discussion? Hearing none. Uh, this has been voted unanimously. And, um, council, I will ask for something. If there's a delay with the MUTC, um, requiring something from the Arts Commission, I will definitely, uh, be, I'll be calling a meeting, uh, I will definitely be, I'll be calling a meeting to make sure if it's past, you know, July, or July, June 31st, we'll call even if it's a one item meeting to make sure we could start working on amending the budget. So that way we could, we could allocate the funds so they could move this project on the summer, okay? So keep that in mind.
Okay.
All right. Will that satisfy Luke if there's any delay?
Yeah, I, I think that would satisfy if there's any delay. I, I, we wouldn't even have to call a meeting. They could just dip into their FY23 funds and then we could do the budget amendment in September and give them the rest of the money they need for the rest of the fiscal year.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So big thank you, Mike, Tori, Rachel, Ariel, for all the work that you guys did and have been doing in rebuilding that committee. Luke, thank you for your initiative in making this, this committee happen. I mean, we couldn't be Arts Hub without having Art Commission and public art. And we've seen a lot of great wins and benefits of having it already. So I look forward to seeing this project moving forward and all the exciting things that are coming. And thank you for taking your time and volunteering and rebuilding, okay? All right, perfect. Have a great night, Art Commission, and thank you for sticking with us.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, good night. And thank you, Jared, for following, following up. All right, so moving on to item number nine out of 20 in the agenda, Mayor and Councilmembers' events announcements. So we're going to start with Valerie, Jared, Jimmy, Luke.
Um, I don't have any events to announce.
Okay, perfect. Jared?
I have nothing to announce.
Jimmy?
Nothing to announce.
Luke?
Just at the end of the month at the Sierra Club, their, their Natural Places Committee, I'm leading a subgroup to create a native plant and wildlife quarter across the state. We meet the fourth Thursday of every month. So if anybody's interested in joining us, it's a project meant to try to get folks to copy some of the stuff we're doing in Mount Rainier and promoting native plant growth. So shoot me an email at Lchessick@mountrainiermd.org if you're interested.
So, perfect. Thank you, Luke. And send me the information, because I'll share with the other mayors. So hopefully we could get more municipalities on board and that way they're aware of what's going on and hopefully join that way, you know? I'll be able to hopefully utilize my network as well to like reach out. Okay, perfect. As for me and the city, we are having the Juneteenth celebration. It is a flag raising as well as a unity walk on June 18th at 11:00 a.m. The towns of Brimwood, Norbrimwood, and Marneer are coming together. And we will walk from City Hall Plaza, making the first stop at Mix, where Brimwood will unite, and then finishing our walk at the African American Museum, where Norbrimwood will join. We'll have a couple of speakers. And then an invitation has been set out for all the residents to join Norbrimwood Day. Norbrimwood, if people are not aware, is the first incorporated African American city in Maryland. So we have a lot of living history there and you're able to talk to their, their communities that have a lot of knowledge about, not just Norbrimwood, but the whole entire region. So they have a historical association that I'm also going to be reaching out, because I'm interested in the history of Marneer of, you know, the good empowering history of Marneer. A lot of times we talk about how we're a sundown city, but we definitely don't talk about those people that raised and built the community to make sure we got out of that. So I think it's one to highlight places that are important, you know, in Marneer historically, but also those people that through the darkness saw light and, and carry us through. So I think we also need to talk about those individuals that, you know, have made the city what it is today. So it's a beautiful event, the three cities coming together. And we're looking forward to continue doing things together as, as a unity as much as we can, so we could best serve all of our residents. Brimwood's celebrated their 100-year anniversary. They had a Who's Cool and a beautiful parade and an event. Both schools, Marneer and Mantry, and Thomas Stone were also there. I was there as mayor and we had a whole collection of mayors and council members also there. Saying that, we, the drag brunch by the Red Committee was very successful. So thank you to a Red Committee. Thank you to Bob for putting it together. And everybody that participated was our first drag brunch. It was two brunches, actually, so very well attended. The Pride Festival, it is going to be taking place June 25th. A lineup starts at 9:00 a.m. at Thomas Stone and they'll do a parade through, through town. So if you're interested in being vendors or having a float, please reach out to the Red Committee, so that way they could help you guide through the process. And we're working on, you know, bringing a couple of cities together, since we're one of the very few ones that's doing one in this region, so that we could like combine forces together. And we had the State of Economic, the Prince George's County State of Economy by our county executive Angela Allison Brook. A committee of the city attended and we did a lot of networking. And we're looking forward to bringing more information, more resources, and also connecting the city to the Prince George's County employed. They are giving funding for businesses as well as now municipalities hiring unemployed Prince Georgias. They'll give us like a check, so we're going to be joining their, their network to make sure that we also are able to utilize those funds as we are hiring various people through the city still for the many positions. So saying that, thank you, Red Committee, and the various committees who have been working hard as they are finalizing the year and making sure that they pushed through. The yard sale was very successful this Saturday. Thank you for everybody that participated. And a big thank you to Danielle also for making sure that things are going as much as back to normal as we possibly can. And you already heard from our scholars that were awarded. And one more announcement I have to make, and I'm gonna, this is going to be everywhere this week. As part of the mayor salute, I was awarded $1,000 that I could give as a scholarship along with a camp seat. It is their mayoral, mayoral scholarship. So I'm going to put information out to, and it's geared for only high school students attending universities. So that's going to be a $1,000 scholarship, and this is not city money. And it's basically given to me to give to, you know, whoever, you know, whoever's well deserved from the city of Marneer. So they do have an application questionnaire and an essay that people need to submit. So I'm going to work with the city to put that information out, so we could reach as many high school students around going to college. So that way, one of them will be awarded the $1,000. And only four cities were awarded this, this recognition. And I'm happy to say that, that, well, four mayors were awarded this recognition. I'm happy to say I was one of them. Any resource we could bring to help our community is always a plus. So big thank you to Camp C, that's communications across municipalities, for bringing the mayors together and their first annual Women's Mayor salute, and for providing a scholarship for one of our students. So I'm going to be, I'll send the information to Council so you guys could like send it out. And if you know any high school student that could apply, that meets the requirements from their scholarship, please send them out, you know, send the application to them. And the deadline is going to, is fastly coming, because we were just told the requirements. But all information will go out tomorrow. So that way, one very well deserving high school student will be awarded $1,000. And it's open for next year to be able to, for them to be able to get funds through the same organization. All right, so I'll cut it at that, so we could move on to the next, next agenda items. All right, perfect. Moving on to number 10, public comments. Is there any member of the public who is here that would like to make a comment on items that are not, I repeat, that are not in the agenda primarily? And if you just have to make a comment and leave that something in the agenda, then you could go ahead and make it as well. I'll give it a few seconds. Okay, I think, I think we're clear. Anything on Facebook, Jared?
No comments on Facebook.
All right, perfect. So I'm going to close the public comment. All right, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda. Item number 11, Presentation of Close Session Summary. Mayor and Council received the Close Session Summary from Vice Mayor Stolpes. We had, we held a close session on May 4th and May 12th. Jared, you have the brief summary?
Mayor, I apologize. I, I did not get those done by tonight. I apologize. I was supposed to do this weekend. Cousin passed and we had his, and I, I just, I did not get them done in time. So I deeply apologize and we'll get them done by the, the next, next meeting.
Thank you so much. I will help you, whatever you need my help with.
I, I, it's, it's, yeah, it's not a lack of everything. It's just, I, I, yeah.
I fully understand, but if you need my support because of what you're going through, and I'm really sorry for your loss too, Jared. So if you need support in taking them out, those two out of your plate, happy to support you. So I'll give the brief one. It was, the days for the meetings were held on the 4th and the 12th. They were both virtual meetings. Both of the agendas were publicized to the, to the committee, as well as, they were, they, they were both for recent number one, and one of them was recent number seven. And you'll get a more detailed summary from Councilmember Jerris Stolpes, our work session. But that's basically the information we have right now. Okay, thank you, Jared, and we'll work it through it, you know?
Thanks. I have, I have my notes from the meeting, so I will, I will put those together.
So you could read, you could read, I mean, you could just read the day, the time who was present, and the, the number that was touched. That's basically it. The format is basically to make it easier for us.
Okay, let me, let me, let me get them together correctly and we'll, I'll do them next time.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Eric. Moving on to item number 12, Presentation of Minutes. The Mayor and Council will receive the following minutes from the city clerk. He moved the screen out, Melissa. May 2nd, Special Legislation Meeting and Certain Ceremony. May 4th Legislative Meeting. May 12th Special Legislation Meeting. May 17th, 2020 Work Session Council. Please look over the minutes submitted by our clerk. And if there's any changes to be added, please send it to her by Friday, so that way she could make any update on it. This is just a presentation. It's not a vote on them yet. And so that's it. Council, any objection on doing it that way? So we can move on. All right, hearing none. We're moving on to all business. Item number 13, Appointment to Gateway CDC Committee. The Mayor and Council will appoint a new council member liaison in the Gateway CDC Committee. Luke Cheswick has served as our liaison for quite a bit of years, and he is transitioning. And Councilmember Valerie Woodall has been proposed and has accepted, has accepted our, the proposal to, to accept the assignment. The reason why we're also voting on this, because she is going to be joining the part of the CDC Board. And with that also comes the vote on behalf of the city. So we are going to be sending a beautiful small letter to the powers-to-be. Valerie probably knows them, but Luke will work on transitioning, let them know what our vote is. And then from starting off, after the, you know, after the vote has been taken, Valerie will take, will be the liaison for the city until her, until her term is, until her term is over. Okay, all right, Council, any, anything to add to this? Luke, you want to say something, followed by Valerie?
No, I just appreciate Valerie taking this on. I think you're going to be great for them. You know, they're, they're going to present to us at the work session in a couple of weeks on their sort of artist, artist-owned studio project, and which I think is a great project. And they're always looking for ways to find funding, which Valerie, I think you can, you can help them with. They're a great organization and, and you're going to do great work. So thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Valerie, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm looking forward to working with them. I've worked with them a little bit in the past as PTO Ground Committee Chair, but now working with them to help kind of build the organization a little more and get funding for their proposals, I think will be first on my list. So I'm looking forward to working with them.
Thank you so much. Jimmy, Jared, anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, Valerie, for stepping up. I, I served on board probably about 10 years ago. They're a great organization, doing great work, and glad you'll be, you're our conduit and our partner. Thank you.
Perfect. Jimmy?
Nothing to add.
All right, perfect. Thank you. So can I have a motion on the floor to appoint Councilmember Valerie Woodall as our liaison and board member representative on behalf of the city of the Gateway CDC?
So moved, a second.
Is it probably moved in second by Cheswick and Tarlo and I believe, right? Whatever combination you want, is there? Valerie, I think you'll do great. I, I think that the beautiful thing about you having, working with the many groups is the fact that it is, is, is a smoother process for you to be surrounded by people that you already know. And I think you'll do wonders there as well. And Luke, thank you for your service as part of that committee as well. So saying that, is there any objection, abstention, discussion? Hearing none. This vote passes unanimously. So Valerie, you are our liaison to the CDC Board. Luke, if you could send us the name of who the persons that we need to address the letter to. Melissa will have this letter out tomorrow.
Okay, I will do that right now.
And I saw Pat today, so she's, you know, they're great, Pat, Michelle, and all of them. All right, perfect. Thank you guys so much. And Valerie, we look forward to outstanding work and representing us beautifully. Okay, and that, that vote stands, you know, for us, you know, until we change it or as long as your term goes, okay? For life. That, that's what Luke thought, right? And then he's like, I'll think about this, because Luke served even before us as a, as a community member. So he has yours as well. So Jared, thank you for also letting us know you served as well. Okay, so moving on to the next discussion, item number 14 out of 20. Discussion and Update of Potts Hall Welcome Center, 20 minutes. The man, the mayor and council will have a discussion and update on Potts Hall. Okay, so we'll start with the update. So Mr. Kamali, what is the update for Potts Hall? Then I'll open it, I'll open it up, Council, okay?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, based on the request from Mayor and Council to get some information from CDC and what would be the rates for 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years? So I submitted this one to Mayor and Council. And also, I got the letter of the payoff in case if the only debt the city has, we could pay that debt if the Mayor and Council wish to do that. And the balance for that one is $284,000 almost. And that's also provided to Mayor and Council. So I am waiting for your direction to move forward.
Thank you so much. And to point out, in the, in the screen, you see the interest rate as of June 15th, what it'll be. And these numbers obviously change after that. So that's more or less where we're at. Okay, Mr. Kamali, do you have anything else to add or, oh, that was it?
No, that's it, Mayor. Thank you. And I'm just waiting for your direction to move forward.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you have. Okay, so Luke, I'm asking you to set up. Just as a point of information, the city got awarded funds for Potts Hall Welcome Center for this year and promised fund for last year equating about 1.5 between both. And it is because of the vision of various members of councils and former mayor that we have been able to obtain the buildings that we have as a city and, and work really hard to make sure we paid off. and, and work really hard to make sure we paid off a debt at the city. And at the same time, make sure that those abilities that, you know, we have as a city does, you know, are, are our collateralized part of the city, right? Are working functional condition for the community. If not, we just have buildings and nothing else. So that's the reason why it was important for us to continue building on the vision of getting these buildings active and be able to utilize them as a city and as a community. All right, so Luke, go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to just share, if I can pull it up here, share my screen with folks. Or Melissa can share the document I sent her, or somebody can just give me share screen. Oh, there we go, perfect. So what I put together for the Potts Hall financing might help in the conversation about what we want to do here. So what we talked about last time was, we talked about, obviously, the money that we're getting from the state, which can be anywhere, which I think is gonna be around 1.5 million when all said and done. Perhaps we can get more. I think we're gonna try to get more from the feds, maybe even more from the state or other grants or what, what have you. And then we obviously have money that we allocated in ARPA, 1 million. And the, 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 the rest, we have to sort of figure out what to do. And so we talked about what are the options for financing at $3 million. And so what this chart lays out is a few things. First, I wanna just reference our current debt obligation. So the city has a current debt obligation. We pay $136,392 to, to, to pay off a debt on the funeral, funeral home we purchased, which was at Eastern River Island Avenue, which is being developed by a different entity now. And so that's still in our books. The cost to pay that off would be $284,727, as Mr. Kamali talked about. So th- those are important figures to just keep in the back of your mind. And then the chart, I think, is really helpful here. So these are the terms we got from DHCD. We got a 10-year term for a loan, a 15-year term and a 20-year term. And then in the second column, you'll see the interest rates. And obviously, the longer the term is, the higher the interest rate, the higher the cost of borrowing is. The cost, which does increase slightly over time, it's not a static cost every year, but it is very close to, to the same cost over year. For a 10-year note, our cost to hit to our budget would be $366,000. For a 15-year, year, year term, the cost would be $271,000. And then the cost for 23, this 366 is wrong, I think it's, hold on a second. I think you have the wrong information there. I think this should be 266 or something different. Hold on one second, let me pull up the agenda we had to get the 20-year cost, give me a second. The 20-year cost is... Sorry. This is what happens when you have to do math.
Our finance team will still verify those numbers.
20-year cost, sorry, is 227,828. That's the 20-year cost, 227,828. And so obviously, the, the longer the term, the less the cost, but the more you pay in interest over time. Then the last column here is something that I think is important for folks to think about. It's the added cost to the city budget. If we, if we pay off our current debt, which is $284,000, and I think we can afford that out of our reserves, if we pay that off and replace it with a new debt obligation, this would be the added cost to the city. In other words, if we did a 10-year note at 3.95%, we would have to find $230,000 in next year's budget in order to support the $366,000. In other words, 366 minus 136,000, which is our current debt obligation on the books, equals 230,000. So if folks are nervous about how we're gonna find $230,000 in the budget, then that option doesn't make sense. The 15-year term, you have to find less. You'd have to find, you have to find a way to cut spending or raise revenue by 134,000 in order to fit this note in our budget. The 20-year term, I think, is a lot more doable. It's just 91,000 is what we'd have to find in the budget. And I think that's very doable. I think we have a big contingency this go-around. And I think there's just things we could probably cut in order to make that $91,000 figure over time. So that's the options for the $3 million in financing. And so I think where I'm headed is just do the 20-year and have that higher interest rate, but have our cost be something that the budget can absorb over time. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Question from your Mr. Kamali, are these, are these loans to be refinanced? If the interest rate drops down? Mr. Kamali, do you have the answer for that one?
You're muted.
I'm sorry, okay, now can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think for the first 10 years, it's fixed rate. After 10 years, we can refinance. But I, I have to go back and ask them to make sure that could be the option.
All right, perfect, because I think a plan to move forward definitely will be, one, to make sure we have our team looking into, make sure, you know, if a refinancing option is available, when? So that way we stay on top of what the interest rates are. And the other, if we're able to get funding for X amount, if there's a penalty, if we're able to pay some of this money back faster. Because that is a possibility. If we're able to get, you know, one year million, the next year another million, we might not need all this money, we might be able to send some of this money back. All right, so I'm gonna open it to Mayor and Council. Luke, that was all you had for right now?
Yep, that's it. And I think there is no prepayment penalty, Mr. Kamali. I think that's, we can prepay, is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
So let, let's, let's get that information ready, so that way helps us, so council. Jimmy, Valerie, Jared? Jimmy, the floor is yours.
So two questions, one Luke, so what is the actual action item that we should vote on aside?
Well, I think before the feds raise interest rates again, we should try to get a financing agreement. And my proposal would be to pay off the $284,000 that's on the books for FY23 and go with a 20-year term loan at 4.45% interest. And have it be, you know, the annual cost will be $227,000, which will increase slightly over time. And the added money that we'll have to come up with next year will be 91,000, which we can do in a budget amendment from reserves for next year. And then for FY24, we can, you know, figure out how to cut 91,000 from the budget, which I think can be done.
And we're in June, we're about to go to recess. Exactly what should we do to get this moving? We've all, we have to have a meeting, I mean, what exactly, do we do this now? Do we, you know, I mean, what would actually?
I think I, I think I'd like to have a vote to go do the, to, to enter an agreement with DHCD to, to direct the city manager to enter an agreement for the $3 million in financing. But I don't know if we have to have another legislative session, maybe at the start of our work session in order to vote. But as soon as we can get that vote, I think we need to do it because I just don't want interest rates to rise again.
I, I would be supportive of that. I would suggest, I was gonna ask for a short meeting before the next work session, about the second meeting for the police thing. So maybe we could make sure that gets into a, a, whatever kind of legal document we need so we can vote on it right before.
Yep, have Alyssa put that in, yeah, yeah.
And the second question to Mr. Kamali, I think, wasn't there still like 250,000 money that was supposed to be reimbursed to us? You know, that you and I, Rossio, talked about? You know, the money that hadn't been reimbursed for the architectural?
Oh, that's, that's close to $189,000 and we're trying to find the council checks and we have not been. We have found some of them from the bank, but right now we're working with the Sun Trust to get all the council checks in order to get the reimbursement close to $189,000.
That's, that's a lot of money, I mean, we should really get that done. Thank you, and thank you Luke, and for working on this.
Thank you, Jimmy. Valerie, Jared?
Can we switch the order? Can Jared go first? Sorry, there's...
I skipped Valerie, no.
No, thanks Valerie, actually, I was ready to go. Luke or Mr. Kamali, I think you guys, one of you might be able to answer this question. So yeah, I was, I, the lockout period thing that you mentioned, that was the, the CDA is like Local Government Infrastructure Finance Program, right? And that's, Luke, that is the way we're looking to finance this, right? That program?
This is DHCD. This is, this is the State Department of Housing and Community Development. This is their loan program.
Okay. Um, yeah, okay, no, I was looking at the emails again, just trying to make sure I'm referring to the right thing. So, um, yeah, and they, like, as Mr. Kamali, as you said, if we have a loan with a term equal less than 10 years, a loan may not be prepaid for loan terms over 10 years. Once we, once we reach the 10-year mark, that government may prepay all a portion of its loan at any time after that 10-year mark is reached. So I guess Luke, and, and guys, apologies, because I'm not, I'm not an expert on this whole financing or what we're trying to do here. But if we, if we were to get like additional funding for this project, if we took out a loan, does that mean we would not be, we would not be able to apply, we would not be able to apply any money we, we received for the project towards that project, because we had already taken out a loan for that project? Does that make sense?
Like, in other words, could you, you, you would have, you, you'd be in a situation where you have too much money to spend?
I mean... Well, no, it's more like, yeah, I mean, the scenario I'm thinking of is like, you know, we, we obviously have a real need to do something with Potts Hall and we need to move forward and this is a great approach. If we were as so fortunate to receive money in the future towards Potts Hall, because we had already taken out the loan, is there like some way we can kinda shuffle some stuff around? Or are we like literally not able to seek money for Potts?
Well, I think we're trying to seek 1 million. I think, I think the cost of this is gonna be at least 6 million.
Oh, so we, we need loans and grants, okay.
So, so it's a matter of, you know, we've got, we did 1 million from ARPA. We, we have 1.5 coming from the state, that gets you to 2.5. The 3 get you to 4.5, 5.5.
Okay, no, 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 that makes, that makes a lot more sense, Luke. I was in my head, just thinking that like, you know, I didn't wanna like, because we took out a loan, you know, and then if some more resources came down the pike, it would prohibit us from acting because of the 10-year period in this moment of, you know, potential resources. But again, I, I agree, the approach you're laying out makes 100% more, makes, makes all the sense in the world. So that, that's clear.
Yeah, I mean, you could do financing for just 2 million. And then you can hope that you find more finance, you find more money elsewhere, or you just bite the bullet and, and, and take it out of your reserve. So if you were concerned about that, you could just do 2 million and then hit the hitch of the budget isn't as much. Which I'm open to as well. If people just wanna do $2 million financing, I'm open to that as well.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with what's laid out here. I just wanted to make sure I understood that piece, thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Valerie?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm pretty comfortable with this. I think we, we haven't run the numbers at all on 2 million versus 3 million in terms of our budget, right? That's just...
No, but I would assume it would be, so what's 1/3 of, what's 1/3 of all this?
Right, okay, um, yeah, I mean...
2/3 of all this, so you would have... Somebody's gotta be better at math than the lawyer in the room.
Right, no, it's fine, um, no, I just, I think, I think I'm comfortable with the 20-year term. So, um, yeah.
But maybe, I don't know, maybe 2 million makes sense, because we have 1 million from ARPA and maybe that's enough to get things started, I don't know, sorry, Selena.
It's okay, so two things. So I think we definitely have to have a minimum of 7 or 14 days, Alyssa can answer that for us. Because now you're talking about big proposal money and loan at 2. I don't know, and we might need to bring three comparisons of quotes. Or when it comes to interest rates, for that, we are showing that we are doing our due diligence and this is the lowest one. So even if we have, we have to show it to the community that we, we have it, okay? So that's step two, that of things we need to do. So we need that, the other three is like, our financial consultant for the city, if we don't have one, we need to work, well, I know for real state and stuff like that, we have one. We need to make sure that all these numbers are tight and accurate, because it could determine whether we could drop taxes or what we could do and how, how tight our hands are. So, because it's a long, a long commitment. And I think also like the timeframe between here and 7 or 14 days, depending, I think 14 days would be the accurate one, so that way it ties with the next work session meeting that we have. We're able to like tie the loose ends that we have to be able to put this forward and, and hope and pray that the last 14 days does not mean that this, this numbers change. But it'll be, uh, as, next steps for Mr. Kamali would be like, bring two other quotes, right? To make sure that we're doing a due diligence in showcasing that this is the lowest one we have, right? Number two, send it to legal to figure out what else we need to do, double check our numbers. And yeah, bring the option for the 2 million, just in case, so that way we have it in front of us. If the, if the change is so minimal, you know, it's not gonna make much of a difference. But then that will, we have both information in front of us. And that could be sent to us as soon as possible, so that way we have it up front, right? Because you're talking about less money, not money being added. So it was, if it was, we're going for four, instead of two, I will have a concern about next meeting coming in with something higher, not lower. So if we're going down, it is not the same concern. The other thing to address, part of the reasons why we were so happy when we got the 1.5 million dollars for the property at 3200 was that it will allow us to be able to pay off some of the debt that we had in current having the property. So I wanna make sure we remind the community that there was 1.5 million dollars that we got for that land, right? Which allows us to be able to utilize that, some of that money to be able to pay off our debt as well, and that money went straight to our account. So, um, saying that, so if you guys could find out, if there's any other speculations on it, including the question that Jared asked, I think I also feel comfortable, because remember, we put a million dollars for ARPA on it. And, and even if we get that 1.5, it's reimbursed, reimbursable funds, right? So we need to put money up front and then get the reimbursement for the 1.5, right? If everything works out that way, it's lined up, right? So this money will also allow us to be able to have capital to, to start moving as we get reimbursement for, reimbursement for the money. But then, so I, I think that's something to also keep in mind. So Luke, if you could work, Luke or Mr. Kamali, we'll share with you guys. Can you guys work on, on the 2 million to bring over to council? Reach out to Alyssa and bring the three quotes. And if you could send that, the sooner the better, so that we have that information in front of us. And we'll put a legislative meeting to cover, to cover this one right, right in, right before our work session in two weeks. Am I missing anything regarding this next steps? Council?
Um, if, if possible, it would be helpful for me to just see everything put into one document and, you know, sent to us, so we can look at it all at once. So we know, like, here's the, you know, projects, you know, here's what we have for funding, where it's coming from, you know, things like this, that would be helpful for me to see.
Like a whole table, 100% I agree. So if you guys could work on that as well, so that will be easier for us to read and also present to the community. Because this one just talks about the, the financing, but it doesn't talk about the other money that we, we have, we are, we are gonna be receiving, working on receiving, or we already have, I'm kidding, including ARPA funding, okay? And, all right, so we're clear on the next steps? I'm hearing something, so I will say yes. Thank you, Mr. Kamali. And thank you, council, for putting your time and, and work on this and we'll, we'll get through it. We won't, we will not be squished sardines in our, in our chambers with the community. in our chambers with the community anymore, um, because that space is very small, even now through COVID is, um, that's the reason why we continue to be virtually. Because it's, it's too small. All right, Melissa, thank you so much. Um, can you put the, uh, whose screen is this? Uh, there you go, thank you. All right, perfect. Uh, moving on to the next item, discussion on the comprehensive street and sidewalk study assessment and redesigning plan. Twenty minutes, we're council have discussion proposal received from Tool Design. I'm gonna open the floor with Mr. Kamali, um, talk about, um, the process that was sent out for, uh, the bidding before we get into, um, who was selected, so that way the community is also aware.
All right, so based on the mayor and council direction, so we put the RFP out, and we send the RFP to five different engineering companies. And fortunately, we received only one proposal from Tool Design. And as a, as I send it to mayor and council, there is a, uh, there's a proposal with, with the schedule, anticipated schedule for, which is going to take almost one year. And the fee is almost hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. And, um, so based on the proposal, my recommendation is that, that we have worked with Tool Design before, and they are familiar with the city, and they have done a great job in the past. And, uh, I think, you know, we should move forward with this option, the sooner the better. Because this is study is going to take one year, according to this, you know, work schedule. If we have a contract with them in July, we're gonna be able to receive the complete, complete, uh, results by June twenty-three. So it's going to take almost one year. So I do appreciate mayor and council to provide me any direction in this regard.
So, um, to, um, add to that, you see in your screen, um, the tasks are going to be projected as part of this package, the pro- uh, pro- uh, project management, existing conditions, community meetings, uh, project grouping and participation, design toolbox and guidelines, conceptual design and cost estimates, and, um, grant support, I see it's optional, and, um, uh, timeline of what it looks like. So I'm gonna open it up to, uh, council, um, as Mr. Kamali mentioned, Tool Design, it is an organization that we have worked previously, that actually walk all the streets and sidewalks in our city. So this is somebody that is not new to our city, and, um, we have been able to in our building of facts around the city, um, because of layout plan that was, um, community-based. All right. So council, um, we're gonna start with Jared, Jimmy, Luke, um, Valerie? Go ahead.
Yep, no, I'm, I'm, you know, it's, it's always, uh, it's a little frustrating, we don't get, uh, a ton of responses, but, um, you know, I did want to, th- this is the broader field that I'm in, transportation and because there's so much infrastructure money out right now, there's almost like so much work and, uh, not, almost not enough firms to chase it. So I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm surprised and not surprised by the fact that some folks, you know, elected possibly not to, not to bid. But I, you know, I think the, the good news on this is, um, you know, I, I've worked with a number of the firms in the space in my, um, in my day job. Um, and Tool is, as you all know, because I've done work for the city before, incredibly well-respected, does fantastic work. Uh, and, and we know will carry, they'll carry out a process with, um, professionalism, um, you know, thorough process, professionalism, good community outreach, and will be responsive and working with us. So I, um, you know, my, my, my personal opinion is I, you know, I feel good about the response we got. Um, you know, given the past experience and our ability to move forward in a, um, in a expeditious manner, and then, you know, moving forward expeditiously on this was also helpful. Um, because the sooner we get this complete, or pieces of this complete, uh, the sooner we can chase a ton of the federal infrastructure money that's coming down, um, in large amounts. Um, the Safe Streets For All program, my, uh, DOT's program, it's up to a billion a year, uh, running every year for the next couple of years. So it'd be great if we have something ready by this time next year, uh, when, when the applications open. So, uh, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared. And if you could make sure, um, to flag when they usually open so that we know what that timeline looks like, um, to make sure we know what year we could, um, we could submit. Okay?
Yeah, I've, Rosio and, uh, I, I got a million emails, you were, I C C D as well, um, council as well, but roughly May, uh, it opened for about three months, uh, was this year's, uh, pool. So next year should be roughly around the same amount, same time. Yes, I'll work with Mr. Kamali and staff, uh, Rosio, make sure we're ready.
Make note on the calendar, well, if we could put a note on the, in our internal calendar, basically saying like, check when the application opens in, in what's it called, uh, around February or so, so that way we could touch basis to figure out, hopefully this is majority is done to figure out if we could already apply for starting parts of it, because all funding is definitely, um, is welcome. All right, thank you, Jared, so much. And, um, um, what's it? Luke, Jimmy, Valerie?
Let, let me ask first, maybe someone could answer. So, folks, I, I am sorry, I haven't followed this completely. So we already had one of these done a few years ago. Uh, how does this relate to that? And this has nothing to do with the traffic issues, or is it, are they related? In other words, is this just, I mean, is it streets and sidewalks? These are the potholes, the streets and sidewalks, these are the green, or these are the, uh, traffic calming? Uh, and how does this relate to the previous one that was started a few years ago?
Mr. Kamali, go, go ahead, if Luke will take the.
Yeah, uh, just want to bring to your attention, the last time they did, that was only the inventory, and they did not design anything for us. And there was not any traffic calming devices. It was just, you know, inventory of the sidewalk and mostly sidewalk, not even the roadways. But this one is a complete study that they will work on the, uh, traffic calming devices, and they will have a concept designed for us. That's why it's taking one year to do a complete study, having few community meetings, mayor and council meetings, and make sure that they present what we are looking for. And that was only, uh, the one that we did it two years ago, that was a recommendation for the sidewalk improvement only.
And just last follow-up.
Yeah, so they gave some recommendations when it came to them, Jimmy? So they gave some recommendations, uh, but it wasn't, it's some recommendation when it comes to the, um, sidewalk, to the reduction of the speed, but it was not this, it was saying, we didn't, we didn't pay the portion of like, uh, the sign that went along. Difference.
So in relationship to the, we have a, uh, three or four different proposals, or not proposals, or petitions for traffic calming, uh, stuff that's on our table now. And we also have some, uh, you know, ARPA projects, uh, and do we, how is that integrated? Is one put on hold, or, uh, I mean, this is a year, and I'm not, I think this is a good saying, but just question, what do we do, what's in front of us now, and how does that relate to that?
Well, my recommendation is to wait and have this study complete, because, you know, the places that we're going to put the speed bumps, it may not coincide with this project. And it's up to the mayor and council. Last time you guys were thinking about some temporary resolution, but I think once we start having a contract with them, we may ask them to, you know, to weigh in and see what their suggestion would be.
And, and Jimmy, if, you know, some of the suggestions here may be like,
You have the floor?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Sorry, sorry, Mayor, sorry.
I, I mean, we could do that, guys, but it's ten AM and we're on night.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, totally forgot, sorry.
So Jimmy, does that answer all your questions?
Um, I mean, I hear it. I just think we have to deal with the fact that people have asked us for, you know, to do something, and whether we're willing, you know, does that mean we just don't do that? And, and, uh, I mean, it raises an issue. So I don't mind doing this, but I think, you know, again, it's two issue, I mean, is the ARPA projects, and there's also the petitions that go on, and it just raises an issue.
You know that, Jimmy, I'm sorry, Mayor, yeah. Jimmy, you know that ARPA could be until twenty-six. So if we get the result next year, we're gonna be at twenty-three, and then we have another three years to work on it. So there could be some allocation for Newton Street, but we don't have to do it right away, I believe.
Last thing, I'm gonna shut up. Can we use ARPA for this?
That's something that I'd like to talk to Tom, and I think he's gonna join us later. We, we could ask him and if we could do anything under general services.
Seems like it should be, but I don't.
Yeah.
Hi, um, council, um, city manager. Remember, it's not a com- conversatory, if not, it becomes a meeting.
Sorry.
Okay, so, um, I will move on to the next person. I thought I said Luke and then Jared, but if you want to go, um, have Jared say his piece, since he was like tying it up to Jimmy, that's fine as well.
Um, I just have, I'm, I'm obviously very supportive of moving forward this, um, with all due speed. The, with the cost is, is that cost just, I, I think, did we budget for this in the FY twenty-three budget? So that's there, Mr. Kamali?
I think, if I'm not mistaken, we put, uh, seventy thousand dollars. I thought it's gonna be something around seventy, but when I saw the proposal, today's market, you know, everything is going up, unfortunately. And, uh, so, but we do have, I believe, seventy thousand dollars in the budget FY twenty-three.
Okay, so we would need to do a budget amendment.
Sixty-two.
How much was left in the contingency after you made the changes to staff salaries? How much was left in the contingency fund?
Two eighty-four, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, maybe double-check that, and we could just.
Yes, I can do that, and I can double-check it and, you know, send the information to mayor and council.
I mean, I, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this proposal with FY twenty-three funding. Mr. Kamali, would you just have to come back to us with a budget amendment in September?
Or we could have a special meeting in July to take care of this, because I don't know when the payments have to happen for this. Oh, we should be fine, we have seventy thousand. All right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Luke.
Yep.
Very wise.
I'm done.
Yep, uh, just a quick comment. Yeah, I, I, again, this, doing this is the, the, uh, way to pave the way for all the money that we want to chase for infrastructure, but we cannot do it without a comprehensive plan. And a funder, a state or federal, is not going to want to fund us if we're just going in haphazardly tossing in, you know, requests or things that we want to do without actually having something to look at. So, you know, uh, when I'm looking at, say, the DOT program, which is, that was zero dollars, there has never been, there's, they've never funded this, they're going up to a billion a year next five years, like, we walk in with a real plan, there's real money, uh, real resources, and we'll be from the state too that we can chase, but we need a good plan and a comprehensive one. And, you know, the Jimmy's point, uh, you know, we got a lot of resident feedback, I hear it. I, I, the, the challenge with moving forward on some of this stuff is, I think those resident feedback should feed into this uh, plan. I mean, it's certainly input that we, existing input that we can follow them. And some of tool designs were like proposals or, um, for street improvement, safety improvements, because we are looking at chasing probably larger outside dollars. You know, the residents may say, we just want what we can get, and it might be like a speed bump. That might not be the ideal thing to do. The ideal thing might be some sort of street narrowing, ball bounce, a lot of things that we can't do if we're depending on our internal budget. But we can if we're chasing outside resources. So I, I really want to, again, as a transportation person and planner, like, really want to do this holistically and not piecemeal, because I, I, I know we'll get some heat, I'm happy to take the heat on that if we need to, and explain why, but I, we really need to do this holistically and, and not bit by bit by bit like we've been doing for the past, um, pa- in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Um, Valerie?
Um, yeah, so I'm generally supportive of this. Um, I do have a question. Um, so Jared, you had sent the Safe Streets, um, you know, DOT uh, funding opportunity, that's open until September fifteenth, and it has money in there for planning and for, um, implementation. So I'm wondering, um, I, I support it. I think, um, it might be useful to apply for that grant for the planning process that this is, um, to supplement our, our current budget. Um, and I also wonder, um, they have grant support in there as an optional thing. I wonder if that would be something to kind of push the timeline up on in terms of grants. Um, and, and as well as, um, you know, kind of push the timeline a little bit, and be a little bit more aggressive about getting a plan together before next June.
Okay. Um, you say, because I was trying to talk, I know, Jared, you could definitely could. All right, thank you, Valerie. Um, so, let's put it, um, can we create an email thread just with all that information, so that way we have, um, all this information together? Um, and when it comes to the idea of funding we're looking into, and I'll, I'll tell you guys where I'm at, right? Um, in the last Tool Design study, it gave us some recommendations of stuff we could do. We couldn't afford half of the things that they wanted, because it was more expensive. And I think Mr. Kamali has pointed out as well, that coming in to do three bumps, nobody's coming in to do three speed bumps. If not, they're going to be charging us the equivalent of like twenty, and we don't have the money to do twenty-four-three. Some of the things that recommended was race, um, speed walk plates. Is that the correct term, Mr. Kamali? And those were definitely a lot more expensive. So having, uh, is that what they were called, Mr. Kamali?
Yep.
So especially around the schools, um, that's something that they highly suggested. Another item, so to me, um, we need to do the study. The cities that are best prepared are the ones that get the money, the ones that have a plan. And us coming with a petition that said, here's like eighty residents that would like a speed bump in this, uh, circle, can you fund this? It's not gonna fly. It's not for the kind of money we're looking for. We're not looking for five thousand dollars to put a band-aid on, on one little block, right? Because that's be two, five thousand to ten thousand is what a speed bump is looking like, that's if somebody is to come to do it. That's if, uh, but it's even more expensive if it's one or two. Um, that's something our city manager has repeatedly said to us. So I would like to move forward, um, with the study. Definitely looking to if we could get any money for pre-planning. I remember when, when we were researching this a couple of years back for the Safe Streets, um, for, it was specifically for Thomas Stone, right? That's something that we realized that we could do. The problem with Thomas Stone was that thirty-four was the number one street in front of like, uh, Thomas Stone that we needed to like, address. As far as the Tool Design, the problem was that construction, heavily construction was happening. Uh, both on the bridge, it was gonna happen in a run though. So our street will have gotten destroyed before we even had like a two-year celebration on the street. And that's the reason why the number one street that needed to work because of kids, you know, uh, was pushed back, uh, because of the reason, because they, we couldn't do the fixes that they needed to do, um, especially because there's like a shared street, right? So it'll take a little bit more coordination to try to get, um, the stuff done and what we need to do. So I, I would definitely would like to see us, um, moving forward with a plan, and, and that including like getting this done, going after the various, uh, pockets of money that both, um, I think all of us have mentioned at one point or another. So that way we have a plan, um. ARPA is great, but the reality is, like, ARPA is only gonna last us as long as it's gonna last us, right? And until I see the physical check in our account being cash, I'm not even gonna like sit there and, and make plans for, there's plenty of plans we made, but I'm not sitting there spending money until I see it in front of us, right? Um, but that's just the way, um, I think. Um, so, I don't know, council, where, where are you guys are at when it comes to moving forward for Mr. Kamali to start doing the paperwork? So we could sign up to this?
I move it, that we move, that, that we ask Mr. Kamali to move forward.
All right, Jimmy, um, thank you so much for your motion. Any second?
Second.
Has been properly second twice? Um,
Just on this, just on discussion, I think at some point we should communicate to the people who, uh, we should figure out how we want to communicate to people that. we should figure out how we wanna communicate to people with petitions. Sorry.
I was gonna say, I'm actually, I'm, I'm actually going through the motions. You cannot interrupt a middle of a motion.
Well, this is about this, when you get there, when we get discussion on the motion.
Like, so that's what I said. I'm gonna say, any objections? Any abstentions?
Well, I like it. Before you vote, we have to have a little discussion on it. No?
Jimmy, Jimmy.
Yes.
I said, any objection, I said, any this, before I could even finish saying discussion, you cut me off.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Any discussion? Uh, so the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, I, I think at some point we should figure out how to message to the people who did stuff petitions that, you know, we've decided that, you know, this is kind of the way to go, uh, on things. Uh, you know, I mean, we should move ahead and it's on, you know, but I just think it's something in the future. So we should figure out how we would talk to them, maybe discuss the work session. That's all. I support the motion. That's, that was my motion.
Thank you so much. Uh, any other discussion on the subject?
Um, if we can just ask Mr. Kamali to, um, just take a look at the schedule and see if we can push it up a little bit. That would be helpful.
All right. Thank you, Valerie. Okay, Mr. Kamali, can you please look at the schedules to figure out some of the information? So that with any, any changes need to, um, actually bring it to, can you bring an update to the work session? So that way we're all on the same page, right? Um, and where we're at with this item, that way fulfill like the other things that, uh, the, the council wants. And then when it comes to plan to communicate back to the community. And, um, with some of them, um, you know, I think those people were more or less like they were the same, the same track. Some of them, you know, we, we dig up some information, people saying, oh, I didn't realize that, um, the parking permits, um, require payment or block, oh, only allows us for two car. People cannot park more than X amount of time. Didn't realize what else came tied to it. And I don't know if they're willing to like go in like headfirst or they're trying to wait for the summer to this, to lay down. But yes, a hundred percent communicating back, uh, during the summer, I'll be hosting quite a few meetings, um, with the community and I'll coordinate with, uh, with you guys as council to figure out, um, so that we, you guys are there, right? And that way we could, we could talk to the community while we're in recess. Okay, so we could have, um, feedback and inform them of everything else that's doing. The other thing is like about a year ago, uh, they talked to our city manager and, um, and, um, uh, you know, I was talking to directors, right? This back with, before Mr. Kamali was city manager. And, um, when it came to communicating with the projects that they were doing for the year were, and the idea grew of, um, uh, Mr. Kamali was the director then. Uh, the idea grew, uh, to have a end of the year report. So I'll be emailing, um, so that way we could gather the information for the last year and we, um, I'll be able to do the, and I noticed that the Chevrolet mayor also did it, which was very impacting, right? The, they quit off like, you know, a report of what, um, the yearly report, um, and if I'm gonna start incorporating that, that, um, ideally then in June, most likely at the, in the middle of July, once we close the books and everything. So that way we could inform the community what's been doing, um, what has the work that been done for the last year. So we could have a, a running record of it. Okay, all right. So we have to go for a vote, guys. So, uh, there was a motion on the floor. There was no objection, no, um, abstentions. We opened the discussion, so I'm gonna, uh, call the vote again. Any objections? Abstentions? Right, hearing none. Um, this item has been moved. Mr. Kamali, can you bring us the information for the work session regarding the dates? To figure out if we could push back to be able to apply to the, to the Safe Streets, both one, um, when the application opens, but also when they'll give us, um, a notice if we were able to get the funding. Because that definitely will determine what, what we plan on doing next and how, how backed up, um, this project will, will, will be. Okay?
Yes, Mayor, will do.
All right, Council, I cover everything, right? If not, send an email. All right. Thank you, Council. Okay. Item number sixteen. Second reading and adoption of a resolution number two dash twenty-two, Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The mayor and council will have the second reading and will, will adoption of the resolution through vote, a resolution all two dash twenty-two. This resolution was, uh, presented by council member, uh, Jared's office. So Jared, you have the floor first.
Guys, I'm sorry I wrote such a long resolution. All right, um, and I, I do need to read it in full. Selena?
What, what, what do you wanna do? I mean, you already read it. Has there been any changes from the last?
No, no, there have not been. That's, that's why I was asking.
So give me a summary and, uh, therefore there are.
Yep. So this, okay, I'm sure everyone appreciates that. It's the resolution of the mayor and city council, uh, proclaiming May as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Month. Uh, so this is just a proclamation. We've gone through it a couple of times, um, speaking to, uh, the Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, the Heritage Month, the, um, presence and contributions of, um, this community, um, the diversity of this community, the presence of this community, both in the US, Maryland, uh, Prince George's and the city of Mount Rainier. Uh, and speaking to, um, a lot of the contributions, uh, speaking out against, uh, anti-Asian hate, especially a lot of which has exploded, uh, in numbers and occurrences, um, including to myself, um, during, during COVID. Um, and so that's, again, we've been through this before, so I'm just saying this for the, if anyone else is watching. Um, but that's essentially the sum of it, um, and we cap off by, um, proclaiming the, this month of May as a Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Month. So as adopted by the mayor and city council. So thank you, Selena.
Thank you so much. It's one edit. It's not just, uh, for this year. It's ongoing till, so every May from here to the rest of eternity and on. May will be known as, um, as was this, okay? Um, so Council, any questions, suggestions, remarks? Please let me know. Uh, we're gonna go with, um, Valerie, Jimmy, Luke.
Um, no, thank you for doing this. I think this is really great.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Let's vote it.
Luke?
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate you getting this done.
Okay, um, thank you, Jared. I, I think it's one of the pieces that we were missing. So, um, it's definitely, um, timely and needed and I'm very happy and content. Anytime we get to celebrate how diverse our community is and acknowledge the wonderful things they do, not just for our city, state, but for the nation and the world. So thank you for this and I will, um, I will call for, um, I will call for a vote. Is there a motion on the floor?
I moved.
Uh, any seconds?
Can, second.
Seeing that it was properly moved by two and, and, and second by two, I think it's safe to say that, uh, it has very, very wise support, right? Um, any objections? Abstentions? Discussion? Additional discussion, but, okay, uh, hearing none. Um, resolution two dash twenty-two, um, proclaiming May as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Island, Islander, um, Heritage Month has been approved anonymously. Thank you. Yeah, Jared. All right, perfect. Okay, on the screen. And just to clarify, we did, did a proclamation and that was, um, we also did it in May, but, um, then we could start working on also events for the month of May and even more, um, more messaging out. Okay, all right. Uh, moving on to, ooh, I'm sorry, I'm very likely losing my eyesight. Um, item number seventeen, ARPA discussion and vote number seventeen. Uh, the mayor and council will have a discussion which will include renovations to the insurance building. And council, we usually put and vote because it gives us the liberty to vote since we, we, since we touched these items on the work session. It is open to vote for the various things that we have, uh, we have, um, agreed to move forward to the legislative session. So, um, Luke, can you give a quick, uh, update run? And if there's something we need to vote, um, on it, um, highlight it or mention it.
Give me a second here.
Only one second.
Sorry. I gotta.
Are you doing screen share?
It's a large document. I will, but I'm just prepping the document so it's the right fonts, the right size. There we go. Okay.
Thank you for making sure you're, um, you're, um, keeping up to date, um, on, on this item and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, bill projects we've approved so far. Um, stormwater management projects at thirty-third and Perry and thirty-first and Perry. Um, the thirty-third and Perry is incorporated into the Rhode Island Avenue Perry Street cost estimate in the government services bucket. Um, we also have approved the Newton Street project. I, and that's sitting here in blue because we haven't voted on it yet, so we've got to vote on that tonight. Um, we have approved the climate resilience and stormwater mitigation urban tree planting project for twenty thousand. And both schools were approved for expanding outdoor classrooms for twenty thousand dollars each. Um, we did a five fifty thousand dollar program, access to public resources for Hispanic or Latino populations. That award, um, was, that money was awarded to Joe's Movement Emporium after an application, a competitive application process. Um, we approved fifty thousand dollars for a small business grant program, um, and the potential to add twenty thousand dollars there. I think that, I'm not sure if that's something we voted on yet or we would need, um, we would need to vote on, um, but we just wanna keep that in mind for tonight. Um, residential aid, we've, we've approved three hundred thousand dollars for food security. We approved fifty thousand dollars for rental relief and those applications are almost heading out. For Richardson Park, um, we approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This could be potentially lowered, um, but we're waiting on a, um, cuz a hundred and six thousand has been placed in the government budget, um, but we're waiting on final cost estimates before we actually lower this figure. Um, for the social worker, we did approve a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over three years. We improved, we approved vaccine incentives for ten thousand dollars. Um, that went out already. Um, we gave a two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars worth of bonuses to city employees who had face-to-face interactions with the public during COVID. Um, and we have three hundred thousand dollars still approved for a program manager, which we have not used yet. Um, we approved and are using a hundred thousand dollars for an ARPA consultant. Um, we approved one million dollars for the thirty-three hundred block over Rhode Island Avenue and the thirty-three hundred block of Perry Street, which includes also stormwater fixes at thirty-third and Perry and Memorial Park. And then we had consensus to move forward with one million dollars for Potts Hall, which we have to vote on tonight. Um, and, uh, forty-nine thousand dollars to upgrade thirty-four oh nine Rhode Island Avenue, um, and make it, uh, the second floor there habitable, so we can start renting that out. We approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Melinda Miles Building, um, to clean that out. And sixty-three thousand dollars for scholarships for students, which we gave out earlier tonight. Um, the total that we've allocated is two point seven four million, which remains, gives us remaining funds of two point six five million. Um, if we vote on the business grants, Newton Street, Potts Hall and thirty-four oh nine Rhode Island Avenue tonight, um, that would bring us down to having allocated one point nine, um, an additional one point nine eight two million and would leave us with just six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars left.
Okay, Luke, I'll give you a favor, Luke, um, on the column of description. If you could, I'd note that, that at least like, um, we know that it's already being awarded. So that we're, we're like, the scholarship is like, you know, um, that's already been awarded now, right? So for the app, they would be like, it was awarded on, on, on this day. Uh, at least of year one.
Yeah.
Okay, and then for the business one, the same fifty thousand dollars was already awarded. And, um, I think you put the date on it when that was and then we incremented to, for two, um, for twenty thousand or ten thousand dollars more. Okay. Um, what are the things that are, and just on those, can you do me a favor, Luke? Can you poke it, can you, uh, read through the ones that are up for potential vote, uh, for this meeting?
Yeah, um, in this meeting, the ones for votes are twenty thousand dollars for additional business grants, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for a Newton Street stormwater fixes, um, and one million dollars in sort of street redesign there, and then one million dollars for Potts Hall and forty thousand dollars for thirty-four oh nine Rhode Island Avenue.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. So Council, you already heard, um, um, uh, whole complete summary of ARPA. Um, these are in the list, things that have been spent on, things that we have projected out to vote on today and things we're planning to do something with and things have completed. So it's a whole ran through and I appreciate you for that cuz that way, um, you know, we allow the community not just to inform them of what, what we have done, what we're thinking of doing, um, as well and how much money we have, none, um, non-release yet. So, um, any questions, Council? So I'm gonna go with, um, we're gonna go Jimmy, uh, Valerie, Jared, and then we'll, go ahead.
I, I'm supportive. I'm starting to get confused with the color codes though, you know, but, uh, maybe next time we could have, you know, a legend. Uh, but right now we're voting on, uh, basically, uh, uh, what are we, we're voting on what exactly? I, is it the blue or what are we actually, is it higher? I mean, we already voted, I thought, on the Newton, you know, business grant. So I'm, so I'm not sure what we're exactly voting on. Maybe just.
I don't, I don't think we voted in a, in a, um, in a legislative session. I think we had consensus.
And do, do we need it? I mean, is it twenty thousand in business grants needed, uh, Mr. Kamali? Or have we gotten four additional?
We got two application that has been approved tonight and we are working on the other two. We've been calling them and they haven't responded yet. So twenty thousand is good for us.
Fine. I, I'm supportive. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, just because they moved to the next, it doesn't mean that we're ready to vote on X. I just wanna make sure that's clear. And regarding the business, yeah, it was consensus, uh, the ones that are, uh, in blue, the potential additional allocation, right? For those that, uh, Luke just, uh, put in the screen, those basically means they have been talking at work session and we agreed to move them to a legislative session. That's basically what it means. Um, and then tonight you guys decide whether you guys wanna, um, vote on some of them, all of them, or none of them. So that's the reason why we're doing this with, you know, at least two weeks minimum between us, like, asking them to move forward to the next step. Some have been like there for a bit longer, but that would give us a, uh, time for the committee, you know, community to, to state their piece, but also gives us time to be able to, um, to think it through. All right, Jimmy, any other question or that will, that answer your question. It's right there in the blue.
Hey, no, I'm supportive. That's, if they, we need a resolution, that's fine.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Valerie?
Um, thank you for putting this together, Luke. I think this is, um, I, I, I support all these initiatives at this point for ARPA. This is good to move forward with.
Perfect. Thank you, Valerie. Uh, Jared?
Uh, no comments.
All right, perfect. Um, as for me, just a reminder, just as we vote on it, it means we're gonna not try to get funding for this stuff and if we could get funding for any of these items that we're able to cover, then they get, they get removed and they get, I have no concern with us not spending every dollar we have because honestly, Potts Hall is a very needed thing. So if we have one dollar, I would recommend Council to fold their ride into Potts Hall so we don't lose one dollar out of like the five point four million dollars that are given to us. So, all right, so up in front of you is the twenty K, uh, twenty thousand for additional business grant. Currently we're giving fifty thousand. There's still four applications that, um, we're working through. Uh, nine, oh my God, nine hundred and twenty-two K for Newton Street. Same thing. We're also gonna make sure that we go for some funding, infrastructure funding for that. The one million dollars for Potts Hall and forty K for thirty four oh nine Rhode Island. And that's the water store management per part, Luke.
Uh, the thirty four oh nine Rhode Island Avenue is the insurance building, the second floor of the insurance building.
Thank you so much. My poor little eyes, this thing is so bright.
I'll let me like I can zoom in more.
I I have it, I have it on my phone like opening as big as I can and my eyes are getting smaller the more I open them. Okay, all right. Thank you so much. So console, you have the one, two, three, four items put in front of you. I will like, I would like for us to vote individually for them. So that we could move forward. That's what we're deciding to do instead of voting for them as a block in case we need to undo any of them. Go ahead, Luke.
I just want to let everybody know, you know, once we vote for these projects, we will have six hundred and seventy four thousand left over in ARPA funding. So. Just eyes wide open on the amount that because this is the, there's a lot of money in these. So just, I I mean, I'm 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 supportive of them all. But just eyes wide open for folks there. And then I saw Mr. Kamali had his hand raised. I didn't know if you wanted mayor to call on him before we get into voting.
Please.
I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Kamali. Put it in the chat, Mr. Kamali, because I cannot see all the screens. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just wanna, just wanna bring to your attention, Mayor. I just sent the new proposal last time. I told you guys about the insurance building. I want to make sure that our proposal. So the new proposal is forty four. Four oh four, almost forty five thousand dollars instead of the forty thousand. So I do appreciate for that. Yeah, thank you.
The forty five, and I agree, we're not gonna be like twenty five in the last five thousand and we don't have a building that's usable. We've done that error before and then we got ourselves in trouble. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kamali. So forty five will be like the amended amount to that. And that should be for all the edits. If you have not visited upstairs, stay at an appointment with Mr. Kamali of Public Works. It is a gigantic space. That is not used. It's just there collecting um. Collecting space. All right, perfect. So console, the amendment was forty five K. That was a five K added to thirty four oh nine. Rhode Island with the latest information from our city manager when it comes to what it will actually cost. So. You're very close to this, Mr. Kamali. That's pretty good. All right, um, okay, console, we're gonna. I am asking for us to vote on them individually. Because that way um. If we need to change any of them, uh because we got funding from something else, we just unvote. We release the fund for that one item in compared to all of them. Okay? So can I have a motion on the floor to approve twenty K for additional business grants uh from ARPA funding?
Moved.
Second.
Is we probably moved and second, any objections? Abstentions? Discussion? Hearing. Jimmy, are you raising your hand or you're like just have the your hand in front? Because I can only see one of you guys at a time right now.
He just has his hand in front. Don't worry about it.
It's just that you I see, I see one of you at a time. Whoever talks, that's who I see. All right, um, okay, so. Hearing and no objections or abstentions. Twenty K addition for business grants has been approved from the ARPA funding. Okay, you could change the color, Luke. Like make it dramatic.
Let me do it at the end. Let me do it at the end.
No, I I know I was joking because I was like you're gonna do one at a time so that we could see the little number going down. Okay, so our next item is nine hundred and twenty two K. For Newton Street project. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I move that we approve nine hundred and twenty two thousand for Newton Street project.
Seconded.
Is we probably moved and second, any objections? Abstentions, discussion? Hearing none. Nine hundred and twenty two K has been approved from the ARPA funding for Newton Street project. All right, moving on to the next big one. One million dollars from ARPA funding. For uh for uh Potts Hall Welcome Center.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been probably moved and second, any objections, abstentions, discussion? Hearing none. A one million dollars has been approved for Potts Hall Welcome Center from the ARPA funding. Make sure you put Potts Hall Welcome Center, Luke, so we stay within our. Within our scope of money that we request for is at the region. Okay, thank you so much. All right, moving on to the last item forty nine. Forty five K for repairs on thirty four oh nine. Bro Island, this is a city building, the insurance building to be more specific. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
It's probably moved, it's been properly moved. Second?
Second.
It's been probably moved and second, any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none at forty five K for thirty four oh nine, the city is the city building known as the insurance building, Rhode Island has been approved. Okay. Council, anything else on ARPA? Items?
Um, just one question. Um, I see in the one section that there were homeowner repairs that might be an option for. ARPA funding and then a proposal has to be developed. I think I'd like to start working on a proposal for that. And so just just heads up that um I will start working on that.
Perfect. Happy to help you as well. Bowie has a has a program, so I've been reaching out to their team so if they could provide us their templates. To figure out um. To figure out what they're offering so that we don't start out of scratch if somebody's already working on it from a different city. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Okay, thank you, Valerie, for that. Okay, um, can I have the agenda in front of us?
I'll stop sharing.
Thank you, Luke. All right, item number. Eighteen. First reading of ordinance. Five dash twenty two, amended chapter twenty four, boards committees commission of the code of ordinance of the city of Maranier. To add title three police review and advisory board and repealing ordinance. Oh, eight twenty twenty, Mayor Council will have the first reading ordinance oh five dash twenty twenty two repealing. Repealing ordinance oh eight dash twenty twenty as a brief summary. County. The county um has a police review advisory board and um regulation that was written. Which override our resolution and in order to be in compliance. Jimmy took on the lead of um. Editing the document with with legal to make sure it's compliant and. Because there was no law that passed after June, was it June thirty, Jimmy? June thirty, the new fiscal year, then it was gonna like um override a lot of things that we had. So the decision by legal's recommendation was. Just start a new one that fulfills the things that you could do. Instead of like breaking the other one apart into little pieces that it wouldn't be as efficient. All right, Jimmy, you're up next. Go ahead.
Just it's actually one ordinance, the repeal is. You go back as if you go to scroll, scroll to the action points, Melissa. It actually appeals. If you keep on going, it appeal, it repeals the former one. And all this really does is is does two things which would be. It would basically have people involved in talking to the police department about policies and procedures. And it would actually review with the police and the uh the city manager, the budget before it's presented. It's a way to get people involved. We also cut back the number of meetings. Previously, it was like a meeting every month. This is like now every two months. I talked to legal and this is the document she feels and we need to have a first reading today. And again, if we have a. Short legislative meeting before a work session, we can do a second reading. Any questions that we had, glad to answer them. But basically, all it does is, you know, says, you know, that the. Talk to the police about reviewing what the policies and procedures, learning about, you know, the use of body cameras and things like that. And. You know, any kind of recommendations and also then talking to the about the budget they're proposing.
Thank you, Jimmy. Just to clarify, is an advisory, so they'll just advise council, so decides what is it that they're gonna do? Um, yeah, and thank you for cutting back the meetings. That was um, it was a lot of meetings. Perfect. Um, so I'm gonna open up the floor to Valerie, Luke, Jared.
No comments.
Thank you, Valerie. Luke?
Jimmy, I appreciate you putting in all the work on this. And I just like the the changes and I support it. Thank you, Jimmy.
Jared?
Thanks for your work on this, Jimmy, and I appreciate the tweets for a better committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What's the composition of this committee, Jimmy? How many people?
Five. It's I think it's two from each ward and one from the apartment complexes, one for renter. You go up a little bit, where we scroll up a little bit. No more. No more. Yeah, there it is, B.
Yeah, I think the other one stated like they can only serve on this board and. If I'm not mistaken, also they couldn't be. Former council members or mayors serving after over a year or being off as something along those lines.
But it's the same language in there. The only thing we changed is they had things like alternating years and we decided that was just too complicated, you know?
What do you mean? Like, are you guys, are you not gonna do stagger?
No, because, you know, we're just doing it now and, you know, it's like.
The only reason why I like stagger is because you at least have some historical consistency. Um, so that will be something to look into because at least you have like somebody might just wanna do a smaller commitment than the other ones, but um. It's a two year term. Jimmy, is that what it is?
Yeah, I suggest we do it and if we wanna make it stagger, we can, we can, we can adjust that.
Okay, and the other thing is like, I mean, we could try like every other month meetings. But I think what maybe more efficient probably be like quarterly. So that gives you guys time to like. Read and review and because those orders are very long. Most of the ones I read um. Prior, many, many, many years ago, when the cows used to like roam a different galaxy and me and Luke started in council, right? Because like eternity ago. They gave us a book, you remember this, Luke, a binder with all the orders that they had. Wow, it was a binder. I think we almost broke our back trying to carry that thing. So. Let me see. Okay, thank you, Jimmy.
So you're suggesting we make it four times a year? I mean, that's fine. It's not, it's not a, I don't think it stops us from, it's not a substantial amendment change. That's what you suggested. Right now it's only it's six times. Go, go, scroll down a little bit. There it is. At least six times. So we should say at least four times?
Yeah, because it's more realistic because if you don't meet, you know, if you, I mean. It's um, it's more realistic if you need to add something. It's just a minimum of, right? This is this is only four times. So. That was more realistic.
That's a finally amendment. Well, we just edit it. Melissa, if you could just edit it to four. I'll take it as a family amendment.
Thank you. Oh, you don't have to. I mean, because it's a first reading, you're fine. We discussed it. So as long as this another, we're fine. Because it's gonna take longer for Melissa. Thank you, Melissa, so much.
And it's all right. I think, is it all right that we have a short meeting before the next, just to do a second reading on this?
You need to vote to vote on it?
Yes, the uh our legal said we had to have a second vote on this.
Yeah, we do. And but it's like we, I thought we were moving, we're moving potentially to a vote for the, I mean, do we? Is it because you wanna start recruiting in the summer? Is that what you wanna move it? It cannot wait until September? Is that what it is?
Yeah, so we could just start telling it like people know. So we had some people who applied already. You know, you know, previously, and we could, you know, talk to them about them and, you know, put them up for vote on September, maybe.
I I will support that just so that we could start putting the information out and we can appoint them in September so that way they could start um. They could start because they're gonna need some orientations, obviously, from legal and stuff like that by the time they um.
I mean, go back up a little bit. I think we have to appoint them. So we couldn't do that until September anyway. Go up to.
That's what, no, a hundred percent. No, they'll be appointed. Actually, all committee, all committee members need to be appointed as part of like the, like. Every single resolution that we we cross into even one that we thought that they need to be appointed. We actually realized they need to be appointed. The last appointed member of that meeting was actually Luke Jessick. And then I don't know what happened. But I think you were one of the last appointed to the committee. And, okay, perfect. So we'll, on the second reading, highlight a couple of what the composition is, Jimmy, so that we like, we could start promoting it, starting then. So people know like this is the people that could apply and 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 um in in our end, like with staff, Mr. Kamali. If you guys could start working on um. The forms already there. So see if like you guys could, once we vote on it, we could have the forms updated. So that will reflect the new requirements and new and linked it, once it passes this resolution, not the old one. So that will, we could start the process of checking applications and going through it. Okay? So we're working on parallel items so that way we could ideally nominate um. The first week of um September. Would would that work, Jimmy?
Perfect. So we just agree that we'll have a short legislative meeting on the seventeenth to do the second reading, right?
We will have a legislative meeting before our work session.
Okay. I'm happy.
All right, perfect. Thank you for this and for staying um. Up today. I know it was a little bit frustrating for for a minute, but the last thing we wanted to do is save people with the expectation that they could do so much, knowing that they couldn't do not even half of the things that we thought um. They could, they could do because of legislation and and if it passes, you know, there's um. What um we were told at the mayor's meetings was that um. So there's a possibility, most likely it's gonna be brought up, the advisory board is gonna be brought up um. On the legislative level for next year and then we'll see what what comes out of it, whether something is done or. Or not. And by then we'll also have um. A preview of how like the county police advisory board is 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 working. You know, so plenty of things to um to to talk about in that aspect. All right, perfect. All right, um, number nineteen, Melissa? All right, so I know I'm supposed to do a check at ten thirty. If we could hold on because we're down to the last three little little. Items, I will appreciate you guys holding, holding with me as well. Okay? All right, vote on approval of minutes, the mayor and constable vote on approval of the following minutes, April nineteen, twenty twenty two work session. Public hearing and budget work session minutes, April twenty six, twenty twenty two budget work session and public hearing for traffic calming device. So residential parking, these minutes were previously presented to us in the last meeting. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted by our city clerk? I mean, you guys have any discussion, you guys could have discussion now and then we go for the vote. That's fine.
I would, I would move that we approve the minutes, subject to anyone submitting amendments to the city clerk by noon this Friday.
The only thing with, I know we keep doing that, but if there's a change that you made, it has to basically be approved by anybody else to make sure we agree. Because they've not already been approved. That's something that that's. Because they've not already been approved. That's something that, that's the reason why Melissa started introducing them, um. If you notice, Melissa will introduce the minutes like two weeks ahead of time.
Yeah.
The previous meeting, so you have two, you have at least one week prior to the meeting and two weeks after the meeting to review them. So she's giving you about three weeks to review them.
I moved, I moved before Luke had moved, that we just moved, accept them as, as written.
Okay, second.
Alright, they've been properly moved and second, any um, any discussion? I'm hearing nothing, Council. Um, any objection? Abstention? You're, you're abstaining from the minutes?
I think so, because I don't think it was on council.
However, this is just approval of the minutes. Um, were you?
We don't need her vote. We don't need her vote.
This is April. Thank you, Valerie, for that. I mean, you could always read them and vote on them. Doesn't, it doesn't abstains you from it, right? I mean, doesn't upset you from being the meeting, but I mean, if you review them, you could vote on them because you read them and there were submitted. Now saying you, the minutes were submitted to you when you were in council, because they were submitted two weeks ago. But you could do, you, if you want to abstain, you're welcome to abstain. Okay? Alright, so, um, any objections? Abstentions? Valerie, are you abstaining or no?
Yes, I will abstain.
Okay, uh, one abstention and um, there is an unanimous vote, um four, one, zero. Uh, none unanimous, well, sorry, majority vote, four, one, zero. Alright, and for future reference, guys, if you are given the minutes while you're already appointed, you could vote on them because you were given to them while you were elected. It will have been different. They were submitted to us prior and, and you can do nothing about them, because it's just the minutes. It's not voting. It's not voting on the items that already been voted on. Alright, perfect. Um, item number twenty. Discussion and vote on mayor and council recess. The mayor and council will discuss and vote on going into recess for the month of July and August. Uh, this is something that we have traditionally done for, I don't know how long, Jimmy, maybe you know how long it's been. But uh, that usually gives us time, one, for us to work with the community without having like the first and third official meeting. However, in case we need to meet, we call up a meeting and we meet. Uh, this also gives time for the staff to be able to reset work on the list of priorities we have for the year, but also get themselves, um, finalizing the books for the city. Getting us, um, everything that we need to start the season and at the, at the same time working, uh, making sure we're preparing the ground for the audit to be ideally, um and projection to be submitted and time. Basically, it's a lot of work that happening. We, the only thing that is taken away is like the first and third meeting of the month are not there, but everything else is, um, I find we do a lot of work during the summer. Okay, so, um, Council, any questions regarding the, um, the recess? Um, any comments? So I'm gonna start with Valerie.
No, I, I think that sounds good. Sounds like a good idea. Good plan.
Jared?
Yep, very supportive.
Uh, Jimmy?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine. I, I think we do, uh, if we do a, a special meeting or we should put a, start putting out dates, because I'm gonna be doing some traveling. So, you know? Let's make it so we can all make sure we're there.
Um, usually when we have a special meeting, it's because something urgent has come up. So that's probably the only, the only problem.
We're not doing, we're not gonna do a retreat then.
We're supposed to do a retreat, but I would, how about we work on each other's calendars to figure that out? That's, that's nothing to do with this one. We'll work on the retreat, okay? So we'll change emails back and forth to figure out when it works, because I know a lot of us, um, do traveling and other items that we, we do, you know? Alright, perfect. Thank you, Jimmy, for that. Um, okay, um, any other discussion on this item? If anybody else from the public is here, like, that's not asleep. Any feedback?
One thing about the retreat, what kind, are we talking about Saturdays? What days do you want us to look at?
Jimmy, can we do this via email? Because we already have a motion on the floor. It has nothing to do with the retreat.
Well, it is just making it easier, so we, we switch our emails. Okay, whatever.
I, I, I will say like, let's work our calendar via email. If it's uh August, it's easier, because nobody's traveling, then we'll do it in August. If July works better, we'll do it in July. But I don't think, I don't think we're mentally capable of looking at calendars and trying to make a decision right now. And I would now wanna hold the team longer than I need to. Some of some of us have been on the clock for the city since six thirty in the morning, including, um, including me. Okay, um, because we had the event and we had it to be the early, including you. Including you, including Mr. Kamali. Um, we were, I mean, it was a nice uh drive um to get there and it was a lot. Okay, so, um, no discussion. Uh, can I call, um, for a vote?
I move that we recess for um July and August.
I said, alright, I love you guys, but I'm not waiting one more minute. Alright, so properly moved and second, um, any objections? Abstentions? Hearing none. Um, the recess has been approved, and I don't know who's happier, us or the staff about this happening. They have, they have a long list of items they have to do this summer. Um, uh, Melissa, share a couple of the ones she's working on, and I was like, wow. I could see why you need a, a small break, um, for, from the meetings themselves. Alright, so item number, um, twenty-one. We'll have a motion in the floor to adjourn.
Second.
Probably moved and second, um, any discussion? I know my poor cat is already ready to go to sleep. Okay, so hearing there, uh, there's no discussion. Um, any objections? Abstentions? Um, hearing none. Uh, the meeting has officially come to an end at eleven, um PM. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Council, for putting through a very long meeting. I know, uh, we're trying to shove everything there, but you'll be able to reset during the, the break, and we have one, one two meetings technically at the same day, a legislative short meeting and a work session for the same day. So Council, check your calendars for Juneteenth and Pride. Let me know if you're gonna be there, so we can, um, you know, um, march together. Um, and outreach to our community members to make sure that they could participate as well. So thank you, guys, and um, have a great night. Okay?
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Bye. Thank you, guys.